Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:32. Today's Tuesday, April 15th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order.
Rizzo? Zuniga?
President.
Harris?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Tobias?
President.
Okay, five members present. We have a quorum. Up next is citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come up to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up is executive session. City council will go into executive session to discuss agenda items 1A through J pursuant to Texas government code, sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. There was no action taken in executive session. There will be no action taken now with no further business. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:08. Today's Tuesday, April 15th, and I'm going to call this regular city council meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Will the city secretary please call roll?
Mitchell? Heiser?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Okay, we have six members present. We have a quorum. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Mitchell's absence for family-related obligations. Motion made by me, seconded by council member McKinney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, all opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next up is the approval of the minutes.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for council meeting on March 25th, special meeting, and also on April the 1st, special meeting executive and regular meeting minutes.
Motion made by council member Tobias. Do we have a second? Second made by council member Rizzo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next up is citizen comment. Is there anyone who wishes to come up to... I'm sorry. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to this body. We also ask that you fill out citizen comment form and submit to either myself or the city secretary. I have a list here. First up is Steve Cook.
...battle buddy, Guppy, and behind me to my right is my brother in arms, comrade Jason Payne. I've been a proud member of this community for over 25 years. I've raised my family here, three wonderful children, and it's been an honor to call Kyle my home. I'm a member of the VFW, Amvets, and the Masonic Lodge. And I'm here today to talk about something very close to my heart, the Kyle VFW. For over 19 years, the Kyle VFW has stood as a strong and steady pillar in this community. We have been through the highs and lows, serving veterans, supporting families, and stepping up in times of emergency. We've cared for countless veterans over the years, and we never stop giving back. Recently, the American Red Cross recognized our impact through their Community Adaptation Program. Thanks to a generous grant, we were able to install a generator at our post located at 107 Veterans Drive. This ensures we can continue responding during disasters, just as we have done for nearly two decades. We've also been working hard to improve our space. Most recently, we repaired the flooring, made possibly entirely by donations from our dedicated members. Our building has grown and evolved with this community, and we take pride in every improvement. One of our proudest accomplishments is our growing community closet. In a short amount of time, we have helped over 300 residents in Kyle through generous community donations. It's a true example of what happens when people come together and care for one another. Looking ahead, we're excited for the upcoming service dog telethon on August 30th. Thanks to previous efforts, we've already raised over $50,000 to help place highly-trained service dogs with veterans through United States Veteran Service Dogs. And once again, we're proud to host the statewide telethon right here in Kyle, Texas. Service dogs do more than assist with physical needs. They bring strength, companionship, and hope. In many cases, they save lives. Every dollar we raise helps close the gap between a veteran in need and a dog trained to serve. The Kyle VFW has always been about more than just supporting veterans. It's about supporting our entire community, from food drives to youth programs, from disaster relief to neighborhood outreach. When Kyle needs us, we show up. Thanks to all your support, your time, and for standing with us, we are proud to serve this community, and we look forward to negotiating a long-term lease. We are excited for the future and for many more years to come. Thank you from the Kyle VFW.
Thank you. Next up, Zach Hall.
Mayor Protem, council, thank you all for allowing me and others to speak tonight. I want to take a few minutes to talk about the Ethics Commission meeting from a couple of weeks ago. Many of you probably saw it, and I want to preface this by saying that I am speaking solely in my role as a concerned citizen. I'm not an ethics attorney, I'm not a city attorney, and they might have seen the meeting and thought there was nothing wrong with what happened. I'm not in a position to dispute that. This is outside of my wheelhouse, so to speak, but there were a couple things that concerned me with regard to the questioning of Yvonne Flores-Kale at the end of the meeting. First of all, according to the Ethics Code, all Ethics Commission meetings are supposed to comply with the Open Meetings Act. One of the provisions of the Open Meetings Act is that you're only supposed to do business publicly on items that are listed on the agenda. There are only two action items on the agenda. Number one was Yvonne Flores-Kale's complaint. Clearly, they were not questioning her about that. The other item on the agenda was Zuniga's complaint, but specifically the status and disposition of Zuniga's complaint. What the ethics attorney was questioning Yvonne about was whether or not Zuniga's complaint had been leaked, which, as the ethics attorney said, is a separate ethical violation. Therefore, that means that if there was going to be a cursory investigation on whether or not Zuniga's complaint had been leaked, it should have been an agenda item, but it was not. That's a problem, possibly regarding the Open Meetings Act. The second problem I had was with the manner in which Yvonne was questioned. She was brought up to the podium. The ethics attorney called it "come on up to the stand," and she proceeded to interrogate Yvonne about whether or not she knew anything about whether Zuniga's complaint had been leaked. The problem with that is that if the meeting had been a formal hearing, Yvonne would have been required to have taken an oath. She would have been sworn in as a witness, but because that requirement didn't apply to a regular meeting, the ethics attorney was allowed to bring Yvonne Flores-Kale up and start questioning her on matters she had no idea what they were going to talk about. Like, she came up here thinking, "Okay, I'm going to talk about my complaint." No, turns out it's Zuniga's complaint, and not just about Zuniga's complaint, whether or not the complaint had been leaked. In our American legal system, we have something called due process, which protects the rights of everyone in legal proceedings, not just complainants, not just respondents, but witnesses as well. And I think the way Yvonne Flores-Kale was treated, again, this is not my area of expertise, but it seemed wrong to me. That's why I stood up and said something, and I bring this to y'all's attention because y'all as council, according to the Ethics Code, you're responsible for supervising the Ethics Commission, and I'm asking you to supervise them more closely because the last two meetings, in my view, has indicated that they need that supervision. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. If you'll hold off on the applause, thank you. Next up is Rose Burke.
Mayor Protem, council members, and fellow residents, my name is Rose Burke, and I am a resident of Kyle. I am also chair of the Arts and Cultural Board. I stand before you today in strong support of Item 27, the Development of a Public Art Master Plan. Kyle is growing, and with growth comes opportunity, not just for infrastructure, but for culture, identity, and community pride. Public art is more than a decoration. It is a catalyst for engagement, economic vitality, and a lasting sense of place. A well-designed public art master plan ensures that artistic expression is thoughtfully integrated into our city's development, enhancing public spaces, attracting visitors, and inspiring residents. Cities across Texas have embraced public art, like Austin, San Antonio, and Houston, have seen increased tourism, local business growth, and strengthened community cohesion. Kyle is no different. Importantly, funding public art does not have to come solely from local budgets. Numerous grants at the state and federal level, as well as private foundation sponsorships, exist to support the arts and creative placemaking. The National Endowment for the Arts, Texas Commission of the Arts, and local arts initiatives offer funding opportunities that Kyle could tap into, ensuring that our investment in public art is sustainable and financially responsible. Public art supports local artists, provides educational opportunities, and revitalizes neglected spaces. More importantly, it reflects the spirit of Kyle, its people, its history, and its future. By approving Item 27, we commit to making art accessible, meaningful, and a permanent fixture in our city's narrative. Let's invest in what makes Kyle unique. Let's make our streets, parks, and public spaces not just places to pass through, but places to experience. With strategic planning and grant funding, we can shape Kyle's cultural legacy without undue financial burden. I urge you to support the Public Art Master Plan and help ensure Kyle thrives artistically, economically, and socially for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Next up is Esther Byrne.
Did I get that right?
I'm complaining about my water bill, and apparently have been told that you aren't going to help me anyway, so I don't know what I'm doing here. This is where I was directed, and so I'm here. I've been living in Kyle for 24 years, built the house from ground up. My water bill has always been 107, the highest, 115. That's the highest. All of a sudden, I get this water bill, and it's $131. We haven't done anything different. It's just my husband and I. We're gone one week out of the month, mostly. $131. So I call and I complain. Then, this month, it's 141. So I'm here complaining because what is it going to be next month? 160? If I don't talk? If I don't... Who's in charge of this? Why is my water bill... I called, and they said, "Actually, you spent less water this month than you did last month." And that is true, because when we got our water bill for 131, it's just my husband and I, and we were joking around, and we were saying, "Well, I guess we can't be drinking any water, or we're going to have to soak ourselves and then turn on the water to take a bath and all." And we were doing stuff like that, believe it or not. We are on a budget, okay? This is cutting from our grocery bill, gas, and I just want to know who determines the amount of water that I use? Hello?
We are not allowed to respond during public comment.
Then, why am I here?
To share your feedback on issues like you're sharing right now.
And then?
I mean, if you want to, you can email us, and we can get back to you individually, or you can talk to city staff.
Ma'am, we'll be glad to have a city staff member get your name, information, and visit with you about any of your concerns on your water bill. We'll be glad to do that.
Okay. Now, I'm very stressed out. I know this is a personal problem, whatever. Now, this is April. Since April 1st to this moment right now, my husband is in the hospital. So, the water bill, the next month's water bill, and it's higher than this bill. There's something definitely wrong, because we haven't been home since the first of the month. We've been living in the hospital. So obviously, there's something going on, and I need to be directed to whoever I can talk to to figure this out, because I'm not going to let it go. Okay? Thank you very much. Is that all you can do for me? Then I'll leave.
Thank you. Next up is Michael McDonald.
Howdy. My name is Michael McDonald. I'm going to speak off the cuff like I did last time. Who knows where it's going to go? So, I wanted to talk about the roundabouts that we're having over here on Old Stagecoach Road. We're putting one on each end, from Center Street and then over at Six Creeks. There are some streets that lead into Old Stagecoach Road that are very close to the roundabouts. So when we have the roundabouts, when they're in operation and cars are going through there at rush hour, how are the cars that are feeding onto Old Stagecoach Road, how are they going to get on that road? How are they going to turn left? I mean, that's something... I talked to somebody when we had that little... I talked to somebody when we had that little meeting with the roundabouts, and I never got an answer from anybody. But I want... I'm bringing it up right now because if there is an accident there, I want people to come back and look at this meeting because I am bringing it up right now. That could be a very dangerous situation. It needs to be looked into. Maybe, you know, someone needs to look into maybe putting a signal or flashing lights or something where there won't be any accidents. Another thing is someone told me, or told my wife, that the city of Kyle is a roundabout-first city. Roundabouts are good in certain areas. You need traffic signals. Now, I have 24 years' experience as a traffic signal designer, seven years with the city of Austin, and 17 years with TechDOT. I wrote this manual from the experience that I had. I personally have designed over 300 traffic signals throughout the city of Austin and in TechDOT. So I know a little bit about traffic signal design. And traffic signal design is not the safest, but it's not the worst either. You need traffic signal design, and maybe that needs to be considered on Old Stagecoach Road. That's all I'm going to say about traffic signals. If anyone wants to talk to me about traffic signals, I'd be glad to do it. My second point is, why do you think we come here and speak to you guys? Is it just to be a thorn in your side? Is it just to say, "Well, yeah, I don't have nothing to do on Tuesday. I'm just going to come up here and speak before the city council"? No. I come here because I'm concerned about certain things, and I've brought up several things to the city council before. And guess what? Nothing has ever happened. Nothing. I mean, it's not just one way because Mayor Mitchell told me back in October, he said, "Hey, I'm going to have a town hall meeting." He said that I was going to have it in September. This is, you know, May already, or April. It hasn't happened yet. So, I hear him, but nothing happens this way either. So please, I'm not up just here to be a pain in your side. I'm not. Man, we have concerns. Man, listen to the citizens of Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Next up is Stephanie McDonald.
Good evening, members of council. Once again, I'm here to speak about an issue having to do with ethics. A few weeks ago, Councilmember Miguel Zuniga filed an ethics complaint. The details are not available publicly, but some have come to the conclusion of who the respondent was based on Ethics Commission members that have recused themselves from the investigation. About two weeks after Councilmember Zuniga filed his complaint, a special council meeting was called to announce that an ethics complaint would be filed against... by the council against Councilmember Zuniga. I spoke about then about how the timing of this was suspect. Two weeks after he files it, boom, he's in trouble. I wonder why. Now, here we are again. Today, Agenda Item 26 will be presented by Attorney Alcorn Reed. This item's an ordinance to amend a portion of the city's Code of Ordinances. Apparently, a previously adopted ordinance, which was Number 1245, approved on January 3, 2023, was mistakenly removed by an adopted ordinance, Number 1279, approved on September 5. So there was an ordinance. The next one came up that negated that first ordinance. The ordinance to be discussed tonight will be to restore the amendments that were mistakenly removed. Once again, the timing of this is suspect. That happened in 2023. Why did it take two years to take care of this? Didn't anyone know at the city that the reporting form, which is Section 2, 274, Number 8, Complaints, this was the section it was in, to see that the complaint form had been removed? They're trying to restore a complaint form, among other things. But didn't anybody take a look at this? It's strange, to say the least. The changes that are being made through these amendments, didn't anybody look at those at the time or even in the whole two years after that? It's just being discovered right now. I find that suspect. I'm asking you to table this item. Please leave it until the complaints that have been filed have been resolved. You'll satisfy the residents a lot more that way. The more you operate in this manner, the less credibility you have with the people of the city. I also ask that in Section 2, 142 of this, you will not remove the following wording: "The appearance of impropriety may itself be a conflict of interest." Please do not weaken the ethics portion of the city's Code of Ordinances. If changes are needed, that needs to be strengthened. I urge the council to take the time to really look at this ordinance and discuss before voting on it. Don't rush us through, and please do it at the right time. If it's waited for almost two years, it can wait till the pending investigations are resolved. Also, the roundabouts, I echo what my husband said. This is a roundabout-first policy city. The criteria for the roundabouts are if there's room, if the city can acquire the property. Not if it makes sense. Please, change it. Don't have it just say, "If we can put it there." Put "if it makes sense." There's a lot more things to consider, whether... More than just the land. Thank you very much, and I'm asking you to please move Agenda Item 26 to the top of the discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Jennifer, do we have any other forms? That's it? Okay. So Citizen Comments is now closed. Next up is Agenda Order. Does anyone have any items that they'd like to move up?
Mr. Heiser, I would like to bring up Agenda Item 26 after the proclamations and presentation.
Anyone have any objections to that?
No, sir.
No.
No? Okay, so we will move up Agenda Item 26 to the... to the top of Consider Impossible Action. So just before 21.
And if you wouldn't mind if we have time to do 28, depending on the discussion, the length of this discussion, if we can move 28 right after Dr. Zuniga's.
Anyone have any problems with that?
I've got people online watching.
No.
All right, so we'll be moving Items 26 and 28 to the top of Consider Impossible Action. Next up is Appointments. Number three, Consider Approval of a Resolution to Appoint Six Board Members to the Board on Aging, with Esther Yvonne Cantu to Seat 1, Cynthia Boulding to Seat 3, Lucinda Valenti to Seat 5, with each term expiring September 30, 2025, and Betty Conley to Seat 2, Pamela Gibson to Seat 4, and Timothy Labade to Seat 6, each with terms expiring September 30 of 2026. Ms. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and Leslie Scott, Library Director, here this evening for the Board of Aging Appointments, Seats 1 through 6. And since you already read that, Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move on to the next. So Seat 1 is Esther Yvonne Cantu. Is a new resident of Kyle, has experienced a news reporting policy administration, and was a past school board member. Seat 2, Betty Conley, is a current president of Kyle Area Senior Zone and on the Board of Unforgettable Families and Friends, and a charter member of Amvet's Auxiliary Post 115. Seat 3, Cynthia Boulding, is an active member of Kyle Area Senior Zone and would like to make a positive impact for the seniors of Kyle. Seat 4, Pamela Gibson, has been a Kyle Area Senior Zone member for three years and their general manager for a year and a half, and has been a member of the Kyle Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association since 2017. Seat 5, Lucinda Valenti, is the current Engagement Coordinator for Brookdale Westlake Senior Community and has worked with seniors for over 30 years. Seat 6, Timothy Labade, is licensed to practice law in the state of Texas, worked as an Assistant County Attorney for Travis County Attorney's Office, and volunteers with Hayes County Food Bank and American Gateway. Our options, the panel convened on March 17, 2025, and unanimously decided to recommend the appointments as presented. Our options this evening are 1, approve appointments as presented; Option 2, approve appointments with modifications; or Option 3, deny appointments. We recommend Option 1, approve appointments as presented. And do you have any questions for the appointees?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember McKinnney.
I would just like to say I don't think that I could be happier with this selection of appointees. That being said, I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember McKinnney, second from Councilmember Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next up, Agenda Item 4, Consider Approval of a Resolution to Appoint Spencer Copeland to Seat 1 of the Planning and Zoning Commission for an unexpired term expiring September 2025. Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. This item before you is to consider potentially new Commissioner Copeland to be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did have a midterm vacancy, so he would fulfill the remainder of this term. Spencer Copeland would be a great addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He has a passion for serving the community and a lot of opportunity that we have in this region with current growth trends, and we have an opportunity to strategically plan for the growth and the betterment of the community. He'd like to offer his perspective and thoughts to the city. We did have our appointment panel that met on April 3. They did unanimously recommend Mr. Copeland to fulfill the Seat 1 vacancy. So with that, you have the opportunity to approve the appointment or do not approve. And the panel, again, unanimously recommended this appointment, and we recommend that you also approve.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Does anyone have any comments? Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, just... How many people applied for this position?
We had two that were considered to fulfill this vacancy.
So two. And the other reason I'm asking is because I'm looking here, and does he currently sit on this Kyle Library Board and the Economic Board?
He does.
So he sits on both of those already? Did the other person sit on any of the boards?
I don't believe so.
So, what area did the two people come from? What districts did they come out of? Do we know where they lived, more or less? Do you know, Councilmember Tobias?
Yes, if you don't mind. Yes, we had two applicants that came in. Mr. Copeland, I believe, is in District 4. And you also had another applicant, Richard Hildreth, that was in District 2. So, to go off of that, Councilmember McKinnney and I were part of that discussion. Even though I did go with the nomination, I did kind of question the amount of representation on the planning and zoning from the specific districts. I think if we go with this one, this would be a unanimous, possibly District 4, or you'd only have, I think it's 3. You would have a total of 3 individuals that would come from District 4 on the planning and zoning on that end.
So 3 out of...
3 out of 5?
No, I think...
Is it 5 or 6? How many we got on the planning and zoning? Is it 6?
We just lost one.
7.
Yeah, it should be out of 7. So 3 out of 7 is what we have. So this would make 3, or this would make 4?
I'd have to verify that, for sure. I don't know exactly the...
And the only reason I have a concern is that I'm seeing that he's already on 2 other boards, and I'm just wondering if we should have looked at the other applicant not being on a board or commission. I know you guys probably went through the process, but just making sure that we're giving everybody an opportunity to serve that wants to serve. But the other thing is, now that you brought up the districts, making sure that we're represented all across the board through the city with our... Making sure when we're doing these panels and we're doing these districts, we're keeping that in mind, you know, that we have representation throughout the entire city. So I want to make sure that we emphasize that, and that's the way we get true representation on our boards and commissions, making sure that we have people representing every area of Kyle.
Yeah, yes, sir. Those conversations did come up. I did bring it up in that. I did have a, not so much a concern, but just a questioning of the background of the other individual, Mr. Richard Hildreth. I don't know if we had a lot of information about him right off the bat as far as his status and so forth. But I do echo what you're saying about the equal representation across the board because I know District 2 and east of Kyle, we are strongly trying to get that area developed, and representation goes a long way, especially when we're having conversations about our redistricting, because that's very important. I know there's been some feedback as far as we're making too many changes, and one's going to overlap the other. But I do understand that, and I think Mr. McKinnney, Councilmember McKinnney, can add on to some of what our conversations were about.
That was brought up, and it was discussed quite a bit and weighed heavily in the decision-making. Okay, yeah. And look, nothing to take away from Mr. Copeland. I'm glad that he wants to come out. He wants to be a part of the city. He wants to volunteer. I'm just making sure that as a council, we're keeping that in mind, that when we're moving forward and we're on these boards and commissions, that we have equal representation throughout the city, making sure that every part of the city matters and that we have a voice in that area. So it's something that I really want to emphasize as we're moving forward. I want to thank Mr. Copeland for stepping up and wanting to be a part of this. And it looks like he's serving several boards, so just don't want to burn anybody out. That's the other thing, too. You don't want to burn out from serving on too many commissions and boards. But if he thinks he can do it, if the board thought it was unanimous, I'll back it up. But moving forward, I'd really love to emphasize to my fellow councilmembers that we need equal representation up and down the city, so making sure we keep that in mind.
Is Mr. Copeland here today?
He is.
Okay. Would you mind coming up to the podium real quick, sir? You were discussed...
Mayor Pro Tem and Council.
Yes, you were discussed very heavily on that day. And the reason why, sir, and then again, thank you for serving, and I know you serve on other boards. I think it was brought to the attention that, you know, you'd be willing to serve on another one if this course time is swing. I know a lot of people drop out because, you know, it does take a lot of time. Planning and zoning is very important to our city. We hope that and expect that the commissioners do their homework to be able to provide us the adequate information so we can make these decisions. Do you have a problem, or do you have any kind of conflict being able to serve on those boards that you have right now?
No, sir.
Okay. Because, again, I want to be able to be fair with those that applied, but unfortunately, here, there was only 2. And so, you know, we looked at your recommendations, got some feedback from also other people that were in the panel. And so that's kind of why we decided to go with you on this. But I just wanted to verify from you that there would be no issues serving on these boards.
No concern at all.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, then, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 4.
Second. And I just want to say thank you for wanting to serve. Appreciate it. Just know my comments were not directed at you. Just making sure that we as a body are making sure we're being a voice for the entire city, make sure we have equal representation. So, but thank you for wanting to serve. Thank you very much.
And I would say that your feedback is legitimate, reasonable, and appropriate to be voiced.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. With that, I just want to add one thing. As someone who's been on a lot of these panels to consider Oakland, opens, Oakland, open seats for the boards, the application matters. I've seen a lot of applications come through from people who probably are qualified and really interested, but they just, they, the applications are pretty bare bones, and it's not really giving us much information to consider. So if you are watching at home or you're in the audience and you want to be on a board or commission, the application does matter. If there are multiple applicants, you know, one of the leading indicators of how much somebody wants to be on the board or commission is how much time are they actually putting in, putting in, you know, with thoughtful responses. So that, anyone else?
And one of the things I want to emphasize, we did update our application process. Back in the day, our application process was like a job interview. We had to have references, you had to do all this homework to get on one of our boards or commissions. We've updated since then, so made the process more of a volunteer-friendly process, so it's something we're emphasizing. And, you know, anytime we get something, we can also make phone calls as well, try to get a little more information as a board. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Now, next up is reports and presentations. Item Five, a proclamation recognizing National Telecommunicator Week, which is April 13th through 19th. Councilmember Rizzo.
All right. Can I get my proclamation back, please?
Is this it?
No, that's mine.
Nope, okay.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Just want to start off by saying, this is definitely an honor to be reading this proclamation. Just want to give you a little history of our dispatch and our dispatch center. You know, our dispatch center has proudly served the community for several locations over the years, from 2006 to 2020. Our operations were based at 300 West Center Street, and we transitioned in 2020, we transitioned into the county co-location building where they remained since 2023. Recognizing the need to bring back our dispatch team back home, we prioritized their space and designed it into a new public safety center. Officially moved into the new building in 2023, and they provide a crucial role for our community. We are also proud to share that one of our dispatchers has been selected as the outstanding Emergency Telecommunicator of the Year for all of Central Texas. She will be honored at the 100 Club of Central Texas Awards banquet this May, and will deserve recognition of her dedication, excellence, and service. You know, something that we don't realize is how important our telecommunications are. It's not till we're in a time of need that we hear their voice for the first time, and they hear our voice, and it's real important because they can walk us through the most crucial times when we're in our most distress, when we need our help. Their very important role. I mean, I cannot emphasize how important they are and how much they're needed and how much the work goes unrecognized, but they're amazing people. With that, I'd love to read this proclamation. City Council proclamation, whereas Public Safety Telecommunicators serve the critical first point of contact for individuals in need of urgent assistance, providing an essential link between the public and emergency responders during times of crisis, and these dedicated professionals at Kyle Police Department work tirelessly behind the scenes, often in high-pressure situations, ensuring that help arrives swiftly and efficiently, making a profound difference in safety and well-being of our communities. And whereas Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is an opportunity to recognize and honor the invaluable contributions of telecommunications, whose expertise, calmness, and compassion make a lasting impact on the lives of those they serve. And whereas we acknowledge that telecommunications not only play a key role in coordinating emergency response, but also offer critical source of support, comfort, and guidance in individuals during moments of fear, distress. And whereas it is vital to celebrate the hard work and commitment of these professionals and raise awareness of their important role in the public safety system, encouraging respect and understanding for the challenges they face daily. Now therefore, I, Robert Rizzo, in recognition of the dedication skills and courage of public safety telecommunications, do hereby declare the week of April 13th through 19th as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. During this week, we acknowledge the selfless efforts of telecommunications and pledge to continue supporting their well-being, training, and professional development. Let us stand together and honor the work of these unsung heroes, who are often the first to respond, offering assistance and support to those in need, ensuring the safety of our communities. In testimony therefore, I hereby, hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Kyle, Texas this 15th day of April 2025, Telecommunicators Week. Thank you for what you do and your service. If, do you like to come up and say something? Who do we have here, Assistant Chief? Give him a minute. Something about being in an Ironman contest or something and?
I'll try to come up with a cool story.
Cool.
Mayor Protem, councilmembers, thank you very much. Greatly, I personally and professionally greatly appreciate the recognition and the proclamation for our telecommunications. As you stated, they play a critical role in providing emergency services to the citizens of this community, and sometimes they're not seen because they, their role is behind the scenes, right? They don't face the dangers that the officers face on the street, but they're exposed to the same traumatic events that often impact them. So it's important to recognize their hard work. We have a team under the direction of Ashley Minning, of dedicated, professional, well-trained individuals that are committed to this community and this department. So once again, thank you for the recognition. I truly appreciate it, and I truly appreciate all their work.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. Want to do a photo?
Yeah, did anyone else want to jump in before we call them up for a photo?
Just want to say thank you for all your hard work and your dedication, and I can only imagine what you go through when you're taking that call. You never, you never know what it's going to be like as soon as you say 911, may I help you with your emergency. It could be a child on the other end screaming for help. You could be needing to dispatch officers to a major accident on 35, or responding to somebody that's having a domestic violence situation. And for you to be able to, all of you, to be able to be dedicated and stay professional and stay strong inside and be able to get the information to those officers and to the first responders, it's amazing. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart and the rest of the city for all your hard work and your dedication. Thank you.
All right, would you guys like to come up for a picture?
Everybody has to squeeze in. We might need two rows. Yeah, can y'all squeeze in? I'm going to have just the ladies, the three ladies in the front step forward. Yep, and then if you guys can squeeze in behind them. Thank you. A little bit more on both ends. Okay.
Next up is Agenda Item Six, a proclamation recognizing Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, April 13th through 19th. Councilmember Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Hiuser, and Council. Yeah, I'd like to also say a few words before I read this agenda item, and thank you to our animal control officers. Brianna Godey, she's actually away right now on Animal Care Expo, and Casey Olivio, Connor Shelton, and Austin Palomino for all the work that y'all do. This is a difficult and challenging profession because, but it's also very rewarding because you're able to work for this community and also take care of animals that you sometimes find abandoned, lost, or even injured. So it takes a lot of love and compassion to do this job. I know it's difficult. And some of the things that our animal control officers do, you know, year to year, is that in 2024, they responded to 4,457 calls, impounded at the shelter was 869, animals returned to their owners, 331, and just last year. They operate seven days a week. They've been coordinating very closely with the animal shelter feasibility studies, providing them their information and insight. The Animal Control Division also continues to spay and neuter, and there's always vouchers available for residents to continue to increase, to reduce the increase of cat spade and just kind of services. And they do a tremendous amount of work, just taking photos of these animals, putting them up on Facebook, and trying to get some of them back to their homeowners. So thank you for that, for that work. And with that, I'd like to read this proclamation as well. Whereas the animal control officers play a vital role in ensuring the safety and well-being of both animals and humans, responding to emergencies, enforcing animal-related laws, and providing a voice for those who cannot speak for themselves. And whereas these dedicated professionals work tirelessly to protect animals from neglect, cruelty, and abandonment, while also safeguarding communities from the risks posed by uncontained or dangerous animals. And whereas Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week serves as a time to honor and recognize the invaluable contributions of these officers, whose compassion, expertise, and commitment to service help create safer, more humane environments for all. And whereas animal control officers not only respond to immediate situations, but also advocate for responsible pet ownership, educate the public about animal welfare, and work collaboratively with local organizations to improve the lives of animals in our communities. And whereas it is essential that we support the ongoing training and well-being of animal control officers, ensuring they have the tools and resources they need to carry out their important duties effectively and compassionately. Now therefore, I, Miguel Zuniga, in recognition of the dedication and service of animal control officers of the Kyle Police Department, do hereby declare the week of April 13th through the 19th as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. During this week, we honor their selfless efforts and acknowledge their critical role in protecting animals and the public, and we pledge to continue supporting their work through advocacy, respect, and appreciation. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to add? Councilmember Rizzo.
Just moving forward, I want to thank staff, Brianna, and everybody, everyone that's been involved, working forward as we do our new animal adoption center, all the tireless work and hours that they're putting in. You know, we're on a time crunch, and we understand that we're putting a lot of pressure on staff, but I want to thank y'all for your time and everything you're doing to move this process along. So just want to say, as we think about our little family members, our four-legged friends, just making sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure we reunite them, rehabilitate, and educate people as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, would you guys like to come up to take a photo?
Can y'all come to the side over here? Thank you. Scoot in just a teensy bit more. Thank you. Perfect. The more we take, the more likely we are to get the shot. Bear with me. Okay.
All right, next up, Agenda Item Seven, Special Recognition of Citizens on Patrol in Kyle Area Senior Zone for Volunteer Appreciation Week, which is April 20th through 26th. Ms. True Love.
Hi, good evening, Rosie True Love, Director of Administrative Services, and we're very excited today, on behalf of staff, to thank the volunteers that we work with and that show up for the city of Kyle every day. National Volunteer Week is presented annually during the third week of April, and this year it will be observed April 20th through 26th. This week-long celebration is about placing a spotlight on inspiring figures whose invaluable commitment to service and kindness through volunteering are bettering the community and our world in general. This celebration was established in 1974 by President Nixon and provides the perfect opportunity to say thank you. It also challenges us to do better and look for ways to be active participants, joining hands to impact our local communities and calling for more support. It is our honor to recognize and celebrate the many volunteers who dedicate their time, energy, and passion to the betterment of our community. The efforts of our volunteers include serving on boards or commissions, helping to beautify our parks, assisting at our senior center, or working beside our officers to assist community members, and they are all instrumental in empowering our community. To all of our city volunteers and the many other volunteers who spend their time at local nonprofits, our schools, faith organizations, service clubs, and more, we sincerely appreciate all you do to help make the city of Kyle thrive. At this time, I'd like to highlight two of our important volunteer groups that have had longstanding relationships with the city of Kyle, our Kyle Area Senior Zone and our Citizens on Patrol. First, I'd like to recognize the Kyle Area Senior Zone, City Hall Front Desk Volunteers. CAS was formed in February 2006 to afford a variety of social, educational, and health and recreational activities to the senior residents of Kyle and the surrounding areas. The founder and first president was Adele Hurst, who was a Kyle community activist and senior advocate. The main ballroom of the Kruk Activity Center is named in her honor. CAS has become an integral part of the Kyle Area community in Hayes County, a place where CAS members can meet on a regular basis to form relationships with other seniors, enjoy meals together, learn new skills, take trips, and participate in volunteer and job opportunities. These activities promote the positive aspects of aging for seniors, their families, and the community. For us, the responsibilities of our front desk volunteers include answering the phone, greeting and directing City Hall visitors and customers to the appropriate departments, and notifying staff of mail packages and guests. They also serve as a key informational resource for the citizens of Kyle, including newly relocated residents, by providing details about available city and county services. Currently, the front desk is supported by a dedicated team of 13 volunteers, and I believe we have 10 here tonight. My first time stepping foot into City Hall was for a job interview, and I was warmly greeted by a friendly face at the desk right outside, and believe me, it was appreciated. I now know that that was a CAS volunteer, and I am doubly impressed. And while I'm talking about the CAS group, I would like to recognize Debbie Guerra, who's our planning staff member who helps to coordinate all the activities of this group. So thank you to all of our CAS front desk volunteers. Clap. And then next up are our Citizens on Patrol. The Kyle Citizens on Patrol program works to improve safety in Kyle while serving also to relieve officers in times of need by using specially trained volunteers for certain tasks. Members of the Citizens on Patrol program are alumni of the Citizens Police Academy and underwent, who underwent additional advanced training to learn how to direct traffic, patrol neighborhoods, and generally assist in serving the residents of Kyle. Program participates, participants must also go through a selection process consisting of a thorough background check and interview and additional training. To become a part of the Citizens on Patrol, they must first complete the 10-week-long Citizens Police Academy, which is designed for community, adult community members who either reside in the city of Kyle or for who own a business within the city of Kyle. Luckily, we have five here tonight, plus one trainee for the Citizens on Patrol program. I will tell you, one of my favorite things about my role here in Kyle is to help with police cadet testing, and it is especially great to see our support from the Citizens on Patrol when we do our testing. They show up early, they greet and encourage our very nervous test takers, and some even run alongside the folks in encouragement as they complete it, their testing, and it is really truly heartwarming. So thank you. We are very grateful for these volunteers and their service to the city of Kyle, and I also want to recognize Officer Plant, who, for his work as the staff liaison and chief organizers of our Citizens on Patrol. So thank you to all of our Kyle Area volunteers.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to add? Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, just want to thank the CAS group for everything that they do. You're very active in our community. You're a lot of, at most of the functions that I attend, I can see you there with a booth, and you're, you've got a friendly smile, and you're helping, and you're wanting to volunteer, whether it's handing out shoes or sitting at the, manning the desk to try to, what do you call it, get people registered. You're always volunteering. The work you do here at City Hall is crucial, you know, having a friendly face here when somebody walks in that's lost and you point them in the right direction, that's really important. I mean, you can't stress how important that is when people are walking around the open area here and not knowing where to go previously to y'all being volunteered, you guys stepping up to volunteer to do that. I really appreciate it. Thank you for all the hard work you do in our community. And then for our Citizens on Patrol group. And then for our Citizens on Patrol group, I just want to say thank y'all for everything that you do and for the time and dedication that y'all put into the job and the role you have. I want to share a story. During the pandemic, the early parts, we started bringing in the vaccine, and we had these big, long lines, and the citizens on patrol were there, they were directing traffic, they were helping, they're out there in the cold, the heat, they were always there, and they were always helping, and they were very appreciative. I know a lot of people were there just for the vaccine, but they didn't see the work that y'all were doing while y'all were there. Those events wouldn't have happened without you. During the freeze, our snowpocalypse, they were there as well. We were still doing vaccinations at that time, and I remember doing a vaccination one time, and there was ice on the bridges and everything else, but you guys were there, and y'all were patrolling, y'all were freezing, but y'all were there, and y'all were doing y'all's part. Everything that you do for us, I just want to say thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for wanting to serve, wanting to be a part of the community, protect the community. Your role is one of, you know, it's not being a police officer, it's being there to observe and to help report, an extra set of eyes out there in our community, and I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
I want to say thank you again to the members of CAS. I see the work you do in the community. You're involved in almost every human service that is available in our community. I'm honored to be a member of this group. I enjoy meeting with CAS on a weekly basis and working on projects with the various members. It is an outstanding group that has become an integral part of the city of Kyle, and I am delighted to be associated with you.
Councilmember McKinney.
I just want to say, it takes a tremendous amount of love for your community to dedicate yourself towards making it better. It's easy for a lot of people to donate money to causes and things like that, but when you donate yourself, your time, that's a commodity you can't get back. And so I really, truly appreciate every single one of you for everything that you've done to make this community as great as it is. I love you guys for it.
For a photo? Yeah.
The whole room is going to...
The whole room's going to come up here, and that's fantastic.
We'll do CAS first, and then we'll have the COP members come up. All right, I'm going to have y'all scoot in just a little bit. All right. Thanks, y'all.
Did you need higher heels?
I think so.
Or longer arms?
I think so. Both, probably.
You've got to be tall to have your top.
Okay.
All right. Up next, we have agenda item eight, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff feedback regarding the 2025 Community Survey Results from ETC Institute. Ms. Sonnier.
Hello, council. Happy to present to you tonight the 2025 Community Survey Results. Here tonight, we have ETC Institute Representative Derek Harvey. He'll be actually explaining, going through the methodology, and answering any of your questions. But yes, thank you very much.
Mayor Protim, council, thanks for having me tonight. I'm Derek Harvey. I'm a project manager at ETC Institute. I've been working with Rachel on this project for the last three to four months, and we're here to present the results. A little bit about ETC Institute, we're the nation's leader in providing market research for local governments. Since 2012, we've surveyed about 1,200 communities in the world, and just recently, we can say we have done surveys in all 50 states. We finally got Hawaii on board this year, so we completed all 50 states. We were founded in 1983, and really for the last 30 years or so, we've been focused on these community surveys. For the agenda today, I'm going to talk about four parts of the survey. We covered perceptions and ratings, major services of city services, and safety and police, transportation, and at the end, we'll have questions as well. The purpose of the survey was to objectively assess city programs and services. We wanted to gather input from residents to help city leaders set priorities, and we wanted to help identify areas of improvements for the community. Our methodology was we administered the survey by mail, phone, and online. The online version was available in Spanish as well, and you could also call on the phone and have, take the survey over in Spanish as well with one of our representatives. We followed that up with text, email, and social media. The sample was designed to ensure results are statistically valid and representative. Basically, we took your GIS shape files for the city, had all the residential addresses within the city, and that's who we selected the random sample from. So everybody in the city had the same percentage of being chosen for the survey. We had 500 completed surveys. Our goal was 500, so we accomplished that. Our margin of error was 4.35% at the 95% level of confidence. This is kind of an overview slide of the whole presentation. If there's one slide I hope you remember, it's this one. The main numbers on the left, 72% of your respondents rated Kyle as an excellent or good place to live, 68% of respondents rated Kyle as an excellent or good place to raise children. And then finally, plus 23 points, that's the difference between ETC Institute's national average and Kyle's ratings for as a place to live. So you guys are way above our national average in that category. Perceptions of the city are high. When compared to our benchmarking for core services, Kyle's performing above the averages in most of the areas assessed. Overall satisfaction with major services is strong. Kyle performed well in key areas such as libraries, police, and public safety, and solid waste services. And of course, there's always opportunities for improvement. We designed the survey, so we were able to develop those priorities. Streets and transportation services, water and wastewater services, and planning and development services were highlighted areas for improvement on the survey. I'm going to jump into our first topic, which is perceptions. Kyle received ratings above 50% in three out of the five areas that were assessed. The big ones were as a place to live and as a place to raise children, with nearly three-fourths of your respondents saying that it's an excellent or good place in those areas. As your place called, or as a place you were proud to call home came in third, with as a place to retire and as a place to work being the bottom ones. I wasn't surprised by as a place to work, since given your location between two major metropolitan areas, that made sense to me. We did ask in the survey where people worked, and forty-three of, or 64% of respondents work in Austin or work from home. So that made sense to me that that fell to the bottom there. When we looked at the overall ratings and benchmarking, Kyle's leading the way in several of the areas assessed, and is above the regional, national averages in 50% of the areas assessed. We use benchmarking because though on the last slide, some of the areas may have rated lower than expected, and put in context with benchmarking of the Texas average and the national average, you can see that Kyle is doing very well in the top two. On par as a place to retire, and as a place to work is behind, but because of your location, I think that's understandable. The next section was the major categories of services provided by the city of Kyle. We have two slides. We had 16 areas that were assessed. More than half of the respondents were satisfied in nine out of the 16 areas. This is the top eight on this slide. Your top areas were library services and programs, police and public safety, solid waste, recycling, and compost services, emergency management, and the Uber Kyle Rideshare The next slide shows the bottom eight. Though most of these still had high ratings, I will say that some of these had high neutral ratings that indicate a lack of experience with that service. The example I used was the municipal court. 53% of respondents said they had neutral ratings for that. That tells me those 53% probably just don't have experience with the municipal court. The lowest areas rated for services was water and wastewater infrastructure, sidewalk maintenance, and connectivity development services, and the streets and transportation. When we looked at benchmarking, though, Kyle is leading in the regional and national averages in all the areas assessed that we were able to benchmark. We don't have benchmarking for all 16 areas that were assessed, but we did have these ones. And once again, though some of the services may have rated lower than expected, when put in context, Kyle is doing very well in all these areas. Finally, the way we designed the survey, we were able to create priorities for investment for the city. The way we did this is we asked the respondents to rate their satisfaction with all 16 of the services. Right after that, we asked them then to rank their top four most important services that they would choose from those top, which ones are more, most important to you or your household. And using this, we came up with our important satisfaction rating. We had six items that rose to a high priority or very high priority level. Streets and transportation was the top one. Water and wastewater infrastructure was second. Developmental services, third. Economic development, fourth. Police and public safety, fifth. Sidewalks, maintenance, and connectivity was six. What you see on this is most items that have a most important rating, very high, tend to have a lower satisfaction rating on here. That's what makes them rise up. They're important, and satisfaction's low. The only one here I want to point out is the police and public safety. It was the second highest satisfied response, but it was the second most important, so that's why it came up here. Your respondents are satisfied with it, but it's still very important to them, and I want to keep that at the top there. Talking about safety and police services now, we asked the respondents how safe they feel in different areas of Kyle. They received ratings above 50% in all the areas assessed. The big one was in the city of Kyle. Over all, 77% of your respondents feel very safe or safe in the city of Kyle, the lowest being in city parks, trails, and recreation areas, but that's still received a rating of 60%. When we looked at the benchmarking for feelings of safety, Kyle's above the regional, national averages in all the areas assessed on here again, showing that the city is doing very well in this area. Finally, with police services, more than half of the respondents were satisfied in six out of the 10 areas assessed. Your top areas were how quickly police respond, your 911 service, and the quality of police services. The lowest areas were efforts to prevent crime, 47%, the visibility of police in commercials areas, and the visibility of police in neighborhoods. I was not surprised by the lowest areas on here. Those three are very common to be in the lowest areas when I look at other communities around. Efforts to prevent crime, I think, is one that it's very hard to get above that 50% rating, and when we look at benchmarking, you'll see you're right there with the national and regional averages as well. Benchmarking, Kyle's leading the way in several of the areas assessed, the top one being how quickly police respond to emergencies. You're well above the Texas and, or national average, and quality of police services. The one on here, I was, I'm very impressed with, was the quality of police community outreach programs at 50%. I think when, on quality of police outreach programs with the community, that might be the highest score I've seen while working at ETC, so I was very impressed with that. And then the only areas that were lagging behind the national average was the visibility of police in commercial and retail areas. I think that's an area of opportunity for the city. It may be a communication piece as well. I'm sure your police have the numbers of how often they patrol certain areas, so it might just be to get that information out there to inform the respondents and residents. We also did priorities for investment for police services. Visibility of police in neighborhoods came up as the top one, and an efforts by city government to prevent crime was two, not surprisingly. And then visibility of police in commercial retail areas, enforcement of traffic laws, efforts by the city's police department to collaborate with the public, and how quickly a police respond to emergencies also came to the top as well. We dedicated quite a bit of the survey to transportation services in Kyle. So we asked the respondents how they get around Kyle. 94% said they drive alone in a car, truck, SUV, van, or other vehicle. That's not surprising, especially in the United States, we're very car-centric here. The top transportation challenges that your respondents said they have encountered while driving in Kyle are traffic congestion, poor road conditions, and difficulty getting somewhere. I pulled these two questions out. We asked how important you think it is to construct new streets in Kyle to provide more connections, improve access to different parts of the city. 64% of their respondents said not at all important. The next question was how important you think it is to increase the capacity of streets and to reduce traffic congestion and improve travel time. 78% said that was very important, though. When we looked at transportation maintenance, condition of street signs was clearly the top-rated service, and then condition of sidewalks and streets were the lowest-rated items. That was not surprising based on the other areas we've covered tonight. Streets and sidewalks were lower rated, and the major categories of service, they were also lower rated here. And then when we look at benchmarking, Kyle is lagging in almost all these areas assessed, except for the condition of street signs. I think this represents an area of opportunity for the city as an area to improve that resident satisfaction and really improve other scores in the survey as well. When we looked at the priorities for investments for transportation maintenance services, no surprises, condition of streets was number one by quite a bit. 82% of respondents ranked it as the most important item to them, and it was also the least satisfied one. So that's no surprise there. Conditions of sidewalks, street lighting in your neighborhood, and traffic and pedestrian signal timing also was there. When we looked at transportation services and satisfaction with them, the top areas were availability of parking near your home, availability of rideshare and taxi services, and safety while driving in Kyle, which is right about that 50% mark. The lowest areas were availability of EV charging stations, the availability of paths and walking trails, and safety while biking in Kyle. On the availability of EV charging stations, 54% of the respondents said neutral ratings to that. Tells me that 54% of respondents don't have an EV, so they don't know where charging stations are in the city. When we looked at the priorities for investment for transportation services, the number one item was safety while driving in Kyle, availability of paths and walking trails, traffic calming measures on major streets, safety while walking in Kyle, and traffic calming measures on neighborhood streets, and safety while biking. Five out of these six options have to do with safety and transportation. So those all rose to the top there. Thank you guys for having me once again. If you have any questions, I can take them down.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
Well, if I could just make a comment. First of all, thank you for the report. The survey is an important tool for us as we go into the budgeting process. We think it's a best practice to make sure we have a good statistically valid survey of the entire city, so we know the areas that we need to focus on. We're working on many of these areas that we were identified as deficient, certainly streets and transportation, and our water and wastewater systems. We've been making significant investments in those, and we'll continue to do those to try to raise those scores. And I also want to take a moment to thank some of the great service and departments that really came out much better than some of the regional numbers. that really came out much better than some of the regional numbers and the national numbers that you saw. Police Department in particular was one of those, as well as several other service areas. So it's an important report for us as we prepare the budget and want to mention that to you as we start the budget discussions the next few weeks with you. We'll be talking about some of these areas where we're deficient and how we can try to improve in those areas. So thank you.
Mayor Pottin.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, I just want to say, Brian, yeah, also being, getting information out there's going to be important as well. You know, when we're talking about neighborhood patrolling, you know, some of that neighborhood patrolling happens during the day while people are at work, or happens at night when they're asleep. So maybe bringing some kind of data out showing what, how much time we're putting into neighborhoods when it comes to our patrolling, so that way people have, can gauge if their neighborhoods are being looked after is something that's important. I think, you know, sidewalks, streets, I mean, it's something we're getting ready to invest heavily in, and we're going to start getting the phone calls because we're going to have construction all over the city of Kyle. And so I'm looking forward to the construction, not looking forward to the phone calls, but we're getting ready to start breaking ground on a lot of streets, a lot of improvements, a lot of improvements that are, you know, decades behind, right? So really excited about seeing that come to fruition, but also in the water. I mean, as we move closer and closer, I mean, it's been a nightmare to get the R-Way, but we're, we're going to get there. So it's, it's, it's getting there. So I'm, I'm excited about that, but I'm, I'm still, still holding my breath on it, just, just letting you know.
It's coming.
Definitely. But just, it was a great survey, so thank you. You did a great job. It's great. I know it's hard to get people to come out and do these surveys. 500 is actually good. So when we had that last survey, when we got over 1,000, that was, that's why I would say it was a great survey because usually it's about 500, and it's, it's tough to get people to do surveys. So I thought you did a great job. You met your goal, so appreciate the work.
Thank you.
And just want to say thank you. It's great data.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Yeah, I think, thank you for the survey. I mean, it shows that, you know, Kyle is a great place to live and people want to raise the kids here. It seems like we did well in the national, against the national there. Yeah, the neighborhood policing, I agree with Robert. A lot of the officers are passing through at night when people are asleep. You only see them if you leave early in the morning.
Yep.
And then, you know, after work and school. It's always a good feeling. It gives you that sense of security when you see an officer going by, but it's hard to do that, you know, everywhere. But, but also having them in retail areas. I'm glad that you mentioned that. So those are areas where we could improve on from the visibility high level.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian, for the, for having this survey put together.
Councilmember Harris.
What struck me about this survey is that those areas in which we ranked lower are already priority areas for the council and the administration. So what it says is our planning is right on point, you know, where we need to be, what we need to be talking about, and the roads, we, we are so aware that we, we need better roads, but we've got this huge bomb project that is coming online right now. There's going to be a lot of change. Sidewalks, there's a sidewalk plan. The vibe will be amazing. So I, I'm just, I think we're ahead of the curve, maybe a little behind in getting the, the things done that need to be done, but they are coming.
I just, I have one question in regard to page 20, question 20. How important do you think it is to increase the capacity of streets, to reduce traffic congestion, improve travel times? What, what did you guys mean by increase the capacity of streets? Is that the capacity of the streets that we have, the existing streets, or the quantity of streets?
That was specifically the capacity of one given street, so the amount of traffic one street can take was how the question was written, though if it was perceived as otherwise, we can understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, I would just make one final point on the, on the survey to Councilmember Harris's point. This is a moment in time now that will help inform budget decisions, but it is something that we will do, these statistically valid surveys, year over year. And then on the transparency page, we're building, track them year over year to show these and whether they go up or down over time so we can see, to your point, Councilmember Harris, how we're doing year over year in all these different categories.
Thank you.
Next up is consent, the consent agenda. Items nine through 19, does anybody have any items they wish to pull?
I have a question about 12 and 17.
Mayor Pottin, I'd like to approve consent agenda items nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, and 19.
Second.
Councilmember Rizzo's motion to approve nine, 10, 11, 13 through 16, 18 through 19, seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So next up, we will do agenda item 12. Do you have, do you want the full presentation or do you have a question?
The questions to Mike.
All right. The item is consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Kyle and Goforth Special Utility District for the design of a water line to irrigate the roundabout of the Windy Hill Road Project. Mr. Tremble.
Yeah, so this item is, is basically in agreement with Goforth, a special utility district, to extend a, a water line to irrigate that roundabout. So as you know, we have several roundabouts that we're doing as part of the road bond, and we're doing aesthetic improvements to those roundabouts. You received a presentation on that, I believe, several weeks back. And so this is just an agreement to get basically irrigation to that, to that roundabout to support the landscaping that's going to be a part of that improvement.
Oh, Mike, so it's not going to be construction, just the design right now?
Right. Well, it's an agreement for them to actually extend that. The design, the design of it, and then we're also going to, we'll pay for the construction as part of the road bond.
Okay, so that was going to be my question.
Yes.
It's a very, it looks like a very long water line. Was there not a shorter location to get the water to this proposed roundabout?
I'm not sure exactly all the options that were looked at, but I'm, I think we looked at probably the, the most viable option to get, to get water to the roundabout. And that was, that was just the line, proposed line that's in there.
So then like, how much, what is the estimated cost of the water line? And I guess, how much gallons per day do we need in the roundabout?
I'm not sure I have the cost on the water line. Do you have Rick Klatt here, RGEC?
Yeah, let me just, Rick Klatt, GC, as Mike introduced me. Just for clarification, that big, long, blue line wasn't the water line. That was just the alignment of the roadway. The actual water line itself is very short. It's like a couple hundred feet at most. And so it's a very short section, short section of pipe just to get the water to the roundabout. So just for clarification there, and I, I don't have as far as the, the cost information, but it's, it's minimal.
Minimal cost?
It is very minimal, yes.
And then what about the water use in the roundabout?
I, I don't have the gallons per, per minute or what the usage would be. I, we can get that from the landscape and bring that back.
Any estimation, just because I know residents are asking about like using drinking water, you know, during, during droughts?
Yeah, just real quick, I'll say that, you know, we've been working with the, the team, Coleman, on the design of this, and we're looking at very, I guess, drought resistant, you know, landscaping, and so things that will need very little water at the end of the day. So we are looking at that as part of the design. And again, we're coordinating with them to make sure that we're able to incorporate those elements. I mean, there, there will need to be some irrigation, but it's, we're not looking at, you know, high usage for any of the landscaping. Again, natural flora that would be going in there, natural landscaping and things that are pretty drought resistant.
The other thing I would say is the council's going to have options for those designs. When we come back with the landscaping plans, there'll be options of how you want to landscape it, but the mindset is going to be drought tolerant plantings, but they will need to have some water.
Okay.
Mayor Pottin, I'd like to approve agenda item 12.
Second.
Motion to approve agenda 12 made by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next up is agenda item 17. Consider approval of a resolution to award RFQ 2025 DD-07 to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with American Structure Point Inc. for the design of roundabouts at the intersections of Kohler, Kohler's Crossing and Marketplace Avenue, and at Kohler's Crossing and Kyle Crossing. Ms. Trulove. Miguel?
Yeah, just had a question too.
Thank you.
The question is, I had emailed Brian about this. So we have a roundabout first policy. We have two known roundabouts, I guess, in Kyle, but many are planned. Did we look at a signalized intersection here, or are we just trying to saturate the city of Kyle with roundabouts just, just everywhere? Because as residents have explained, sometimes it makes sense to keep the traditional signalized, and I just want to make sure that this is not just artwork that we're trying to achieve, but that we're really achieving a long-lasting construction that is safer and that we're just, we're just not bypassing that for, for architecture that we're looking at. So I, I understand we're trying to create value in the city, but is there an alternative where signalized works and it's budgeted appropriately? And we're not trying to just chase architecture?
Yes, of course. So we look at each intersection independently and do traffic analysis to determine what's the appropriate design to manage traffic at those intersections. And both, both of these locations at Marketplace and Kohler's, and also Kyle Crossing and Kohler's, it was determined that a roundabout was the preferred design that would manage the traffic most appropriately. We showed that to the council a few weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago. We showed those preliminary designs to the council. The council directed us to proceed with the designs and to issue a request for qualifications to select the, the most appropriate firm to do the designs. But to your point, certainly all options are on the table when we look at intersections. But in these two cases, it was determined to be that the roundabouts were the best overall solution, looking at safety and mobility altogether. That's not always the same for every location, but for these, that, that was the conclusion of the engineers looking at it.
Would, would it be possible to at some point get American Structure Point experts to present roundabout information? I, I know some of us council have been to Carmo, and some of us have been on the council longer, and we've seen these studies, but for us, for our residents getting more accustomed to seeing us approve more roundabouts, that they hear from the designers, like what it is that they're achieving in the best product that they're delivering, so, because we're, we're spending more money on them, and, and, you know, sometimes it seems like we're chasing that architecture rather than, you know, trying to decide on an alternative.
Well, I, I, I think certainly, yes, we can have some educational sessions with the council on that in the community. One of the things that we're going to be doing with our communications program is focusing on how roundabouts work, how to use them, how to properly enter them, and how to exit them. There's some great work that's been done on that around the country, and we'll be putting out some messaging around that as more of these are built, certainly as the ones on Kohler's are coming to fruition. That's going to be important to make sure people know how to navigate through that. We can certainly do that. But to address your other point, the primary emphasis for us has not been on architecture, it's been on safety. And the roundabouts are the safest form of traffic mitigation at these intersections. And, you know, we've seen the data, I think it's been presented here before, we've talked about it with the council at length, but there are large percentages decreased on, on traffic fatalities and accidents that compared to your traditional intersections. And when you do have accidents at traditional intersections with signals, they're much more serious, there are injuries, and many times fatalities. Those don't occur with the same level of frequency. In fact, the numbers that have been quoted to me are 90% less fatalities than typical intersections. So that's the reason that these are being pursued is for the safety of the community, not for architecture, but because they're safer intersections for our residents and because they help mobility. Those are the primary reasons.
So like when we, like high level, when we look at the planning, the roundabouts keep traffic flowing, but in order to keep the traffic flowing, you have to have at the end of that, like another roundabout. So it seems like there's a process of eliminating signalized intersections, because once you get to one signalized intersection, the flow of the, of the roundabout benefit has been negated. So do y'all look at that? I mean, because it seems like if we, if we keep putting them in, yes, we're going to flow, we're going to have traffic flow, but once we hit one signalized, it, it all comes to a stop again.
I think eventually you do have areas where you would need signals. We're not going to eliminate all signals in the city, and no one's suggesting that. For on the Kohler's corridor that you're, that we're talking about this evening, the goal is to have a, a path to go from Seton Hospital all the way underneath I-35 is that is one of the road bond projects that we have. It will construct Kohler's to underneath I-35. So I-35 will be raised up, and that will be an intersection that cars can go through without stopping. Go through these two roundabouts. You will have a stop at 1626 in Kohler's, but then you'll have three additional roundabouts on the west side of Kohler's. So the entire mobility of that corridor will be improved. They're all contiguous and designed to move traffic through there. They don't have to be next to each other to be effective.
Okay.
And Mike, did you have any other comments on that as well?
Yeah, just the only thing I will add to that is one of the things we wanted to do, beginning with the transportation master plan process, but also going forward, is look at the function and performance of corridors, like some full segment of the corridor, because there are going to be roundabouts, and sometimes there's going to be signalized intersections. So we want to make sure that we're looking at the full performance of that and how traffic is flowing through that and how they're, how they're kind of, kind of synced up basically between signals and the roundabouts. And so we will be looking at that going forward. We're going to start that process through the transportation master plan process.
I just want to add something real quick. Just want to say, look, understand your, your questioning, because I had the same questioning when I first got to the DIAS. I hated roundabouts. I actually reached out to the former mayor and told him that if he put a roundabout on Kohler's, I was going to build a body shop across the street and make a lot of money. But that, my thinking has changed, and the reason why is that I've seen it work. And when you see it work, you see, one of the worst complaints we have right now is the backup at all our signalized intersections. You get the emails, we're getting, all getting emails. It's really bad to keep traffic flowing. It's about peace of mind. It's people getting to our city limits and being able to get to their home in a timely manner is important. The other thing is safety. You can't put a price on safety. Our most dangerous intersections right now are T-intersections, signalized intersections. That's where we've had our fatalities. Carmo, Indiana went from having over 100 major accidents to almost none, non-existent. They had two fatalities, but it was because two people got drunk and missed the roundabout. That was the biggest thing. But other than that, they were having major accidents, over 100 major accidents. These were accidents where people were going to the hospital, and they went down to almost nothing. So it's, the data's there, there's plenty of numbers to support it, but like I'll tell you, I, I was against roundabouts when I first got to the DIAS, but I can see how the benefits now. Keeps traffic flowing, it keeps people safe. The, the accidents now are at a slow speed, not at high speed. I've, I've got a daughter that's, that's driving now, and when I, when we started driving, we got to a green light, I said, what do you do right now? What does green mean? And she says, go. And I said, no, look out for red, because that's what's coming. The person running the red light or the yellow light is going to T-bone you and probably take your life. So anytime you take off at a green light, you have to look to your left. They're the most dangerous intersections in any city, and they're the most dangerous intersections in our city right now, too.
Mike, did you, a couple meetings ago, tell us that you, there have been talks with TechDOT about the intersection at Kohler's and 1626, and that they had floated the idea of putting in a roundabout there at some point in the future?
So TechDOT is starting to look more at roundabouts as an option. I know they've been working with Hays County on some roundabouts, and they have talked to us about, you know, they're definitely willing to look at that, and, and I think at some of those key intersections as well. So, so we are doing some of this in coordination with TechDOT as well. It's definitely something that they're, that they're supportive of us taking a look at.
So to your question of, you know, kind of fluidity through roundabouts, that is one of the bookend roundabouts, or areas of that corridor, as Mike was talking about.
Just, just to add on to that, one of the things we've looked at at that intersection is through lanes. So there might be some type of bridge. This is an improvement in the future at some point, some type of bridge with through lanes through that intersection, so you'd have that continuity of travel through that into these other areas. So this whole corridor that Mike's talking about, and that transportation corridor, there would be continuous movement. The other thing that we're looking at is a bridge over the rail crossing at Kohler's, right next to Marketplace. That's contemplated to be an elevated crossing over that bridge. So again, from that entire corridor, the idea is to go from 2770 all the way to Seton without stopping eventually.
No, I, I get all y'all's points, and then they're, they're very valid on the safety and everything, but like when you're But like when you look at the evolved, the involvement of other cities, I'm only hearing about Kyle and roundabouts. Don't really hear much about neighboring cities building roundabouts. So I just want to make sure that, I guess we're trying to be unique, but are we, are we right on what we're doing? You know, with, with this many roundabouts? Because I don't see the other cities jumping on board to do this from Buda, New Braunfels, San Marcos. I mean, I just don't know if, if we're, where are we, are we going? Are we trying to be unique, the only city with them?
Well, I think the other thing is we're trying to get it right. We're trying to look at each one individually and make sure we have the right solution for the intersections. And, and we think these are the right solutions, otherwise we wouldn't propose them to you. But we also have more transportation projects than any neighboring city. It's truly massive, a $300, $300 million program that we have for roundabouts and another $45 million program just for West Kohler's. So you've got almost $350 million that's planned for transportation. So because of that, there's more opportunities, there's more intersections that are being improved than I think any of the neighboring communities around here. But they are something that, I mean, to your point, they're relatively new in Texas over the last 10 to 20 years. I mean, there are more cities that are adopting them as that data is becoming more accepted. And you do see them at lots of other places around the country and in Texas.
Thank you. The good answers.
I think those were good to hear.
It was a good discussion.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mayor Protem, if you don't mind, I know when you keep going, but I just got three points, if you don't mind me, I'll make it real quick. Okay, to piggyback off of Dr. Zuniga, American Structure Point Incorporated, are they the only ones, they got RFQs on this? And are they going to be our primary roundabout construction contractor?
So for this particular pair of roundabouts, we did a scope-specific RFQ where we put out a request for qualifications and sought responses. I'm going to advance through the slides. We had six responses that were received for this particular solicitation, and this was the highest rated out of the evaluation process. So it's not necessary, necessarily going to be American Structure Point for everything we do roundabout-related for all times moving forward. This scope is these two.
I think we've approved a couple of them already.
With American Structure Point?
Yes.
Yeah, I have to go back and check. It wouldn't surprise me.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make sure if this is going to be our primary person moving forward, is that going to be something to where Dr. Zuniga makes a good point? Well, why, why are they not here to tell us this is how our roundabouts are going to work? Maybe we can have that for the next agenda, or you can give us a demonstration of how your roundabouts are built. Because some of the concerns I have, and it's coming up on my agenda item, is we're trying to get, fix a, a big issue at Dacey and Downing. And there's a proposed roundabout there as well in that neighborhood. So you've got people that are clocked at 45 to 65 miles an hour that come down Dacey. And then we're going to be hitting a four-lane roundabout on that end is what's being proposed. And some of the residents are kind of curious about it, some are really opposed of it. Because again, you've got an elementary school less than about 100 mi, uh, feet away. So there's that. And to my last point, I've always been the opposition on, on the roundabouts because I'm, I'm always know that there are certain areas of a city that could require it, maybe in neighborhoods. But when we're dealing with big intersections, like I've had this one debate with this one lady over and over again, I'll take five minutes out of your day to sit, have you sit at a stoplight to make sure you get home safe. Because all this speeding and all this excessive accidents we're having, it's driver behavior. It's not roads, it's not the angle of where it is, it's people that don't know how to slow down. And so I have no problem you waiting at a stop sign or at a stoplight if it means that you get home safe on that end. I know we're talking about the flow, but I'm all about the traffic control. But if you don't mind, sir, thank you.
Steve Wadaki with American Structure Point. Just a point, right now, projects that I have, I'm in the process of designing 14 different roundabouts.
Steve, will you stand closer to the mic?
Sorry. Thank you, sir. I, I normally talk to you a lot, I figured that was probably good enough. But just to give you an idea of typically how we look at the roundabout designs, you'll look at the approach into the roundabouts. The approach roadways usually have curves, reverse curves. You have the central island, and then from there you go around, you come back out. It might be a little more straight once you come out. But the whole idea behind the roundabout is in the approach and through the roundabout, we typically reduce the speeds down to between 25 and 30 miles an hour. 25 miles an hour, five miles over school zone speeds. So they're relatively slow. In addition to that, the circular rotation of the roundabouts versus the T-intersection or across, we're starting to cut down the number of conflict points at every one of these intersections. You take a cross intersection, there's, I believe, either 32 or 36 conflict points. At a T, I want to say it's, I think it's 12. At any roundabout, the max you get is eight. And in addition to that, instead of like this, which are the T-bones, the head-ons, they're at oblique angles, because you're in a circle, you're coming in at an angle to somebody that you're yielding to. So that's why, as Brian was saying, they're safer because you don't have the T-bones or the head-ons where you have fatalities, people injured horrendously in those things, and they're at lower speeds. If you're at 20 to 25 miles an hour in a roundabout going around the circle, somebody hits you, they're probably going to sideswipe you or just get you in a blank angle, a shallow angle on the door or something like that. Very few injuries. That's why, as the data from Carmel has shown, that they are significantly safer than your conventional intersections. Do they apply to every one of them? No, absolutely not. But that's part of the process and the exercise that's even been gone through on this. On the roundabouts, we're designing Dacey, or excuse me, BB Road is one of the projects I'm designing in the bond program. We have four roundabouts there. All of them prove to be a safer design from the standpoint of just how the traffic moves through the intersection. And they also move more traffic volume in addition to that. So higher traffic volumes and increased safety, that's a winner in most instances.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I understand that there's certain areas of a city that would probably require that. But I know that there's certain areas that would benefit with a traffic light. And so that is something that I hope that we, as we look at building these roads, we really look to say, maybe a roundabout may not work here. We may need to go with a, a different, a different angle on that end. I want to make sure all our options are open before we just sign off on every single roundabout like Dr. Zuniga is saying. We don't want to be to that point to where maybe it's not so much the art of text, but it's about the safety. And of course, that's what our, our whole mission is, is providing the, the flow of it all, but being safe at the same time. Thank you, I yield after that.
And I, just the last point I'd like to make, you did discuss a lot about safety, and I agree with you, safety for vehicles. But how about safety for pedestrians? Like if you could get us some data that shows number of accidents for walkers around the roundabouts, that's, we got to look at people that are going to walk at these intersections. They're no longer safe intersections. Now you, now you have, every car must yield to that person that needs to get from one end to the other. So if you could provide us that, that information.
Yeah, we can come back with that as well. And that is one of the other data points, that the roundabouts are typically safer for pedestrians as well versus the conventional intersections. But yes, sir, we can bring that back.
All right, motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Mayor Protem Pizer, to approve Agenda Item 17.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6-0. And with that, I'd like to take a five-minute recess and we will reconvene here at 9:00 o'clock. All right, do we have, we're, Mr. McKinney? Give him 30 seconds. Let me see if he's in the back.
Item 20?
All right, this meeting is back in order. Next up is Agenda Item 20, public hearing and discussion related to the redrawn of the boundaries for the city's single-member city council districts, including the proposed Plan B, which is based on city council comments at the special meeting on March 29th, 2025. Ms. Alcorn, read.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. Amy Alcorn, the city attorney. So this item is a continuation of an item we've been discussing for probably close to a year at this point on the redistricting of the city council districts. This, this specific item was requested on March 29th during a special council meeting when we discussed the maps. What I've provided in these, these slides are the two proposed maps that we've looked at. The one on display right now is Plan A, and then this right here is Plan B. That plan was drawn in response to city council conversation on March 29th. At the end of that meeting, it was requested that we hold a public hearing at the next council meeting that was available to allow public to come and provide feedback, and that's what we're here for today. Kabi Caputo with Bickerstaff is also here to answer any council questions that we might have after the public hearing. Thank you.
And with that, should I just wait for comments? Open the public hearing now? With that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may come up to the podium and please state your name for the record. Anyone? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. All right, you're up.
Mayor Protem, council, thank you for having me. Kabi Caputo, Bickerstaff, Heath Delgado-Costa Law Firm. As the city attorney said, we had a drawing session on March 29th. The council members who were there came up with a, an alternative Plan B, which meets all the criteria that I have. I can support and defend this Plan B. Whether it's the best plan for Kyle is of course for y'all to decide in, you know, consultation with your constituents. So I don't really have anything formal prepared, other than this is the plan that you guys drew. And it's, it's fully, fully functional and defensible.
Mayor Protem. Yes. Oh, if you want to go left first, I'd be right.
Go, you go, Robert.
Councilmember Rizzo.
I, I know you came up with Plan A as an original, and the reason why you came up with Plan A was, is a very minute change. The other thing is that it kept the districts pretty much in ho and kept our representation in ho. My concern with Plan B, and I apologize to my council members, I was in here for the last one when y'all had the discussion. I just feel like the district numbers and the representation changed dramatically. I'm not, I'm not really a big fan of it and would love to see us stay at Plan A. Reason why is that y'all did the homework, y'all, y'all showed the numbers, you showed the minute change. And I think the change in B is too drastic. I just, I just don't have a good feeling about it.
Anyone else? Councilmember Tobias.
All right. Yeah, unfortunately I was out as well. I did tune in, but we did have some technical difficulties. Reviewing the map, I see that the big changes are in District 4, correct? And we're, what are we using as a borderline? Was it Burleson that we decided on?
1626 on the north side and Burleson. Instead of using the railroad tracks, which is what we were using.
So, so if you look at the, the map as a whole, you can see District 4 has, looks like a majority of the city to the west. And I know we, we're predicting growth in District 6, for example, to come, but that may be in a couple of years from now. So I think what, what we're looking at is representation as of today. So, you know, I, I kind of agreed with some of, some of the changes that we had. There are some, some, some major changes to District 2, which I can understand the concerns Councilman Rizzo has. But moving forward, when it comes to these plans, what steps have we brought to bring this to the public to review? I know we just had a public hearing, but is there an option to where we can have a open house kind of setting to where we can show the residents both sides of what we're looking at? Because I think we're going to be in the same situation in, in about six more years, correct?
Yeah, we'll be back in six years.
So well, in six years, we're going to be back to square one again. So to Councilman Rizzo's point, should we be, number one, making these major changes to the districts itself when we don't really have an accurate census number because of 2020 COVID? Or should we go ahead and go with Plan B and rearrange the, the settings of the representation? And if you do that, what does that lie for District 4? Would that mean that the population is a little bit higher to where you might need to have another representative in the future? For District 4, to where you have two?
We, we will continue to have three district representatives until we change the city charter. And I will note that the Charter Review Committee has not, Commission has not recommended changing the number of single-member district representatives.
Okay, okay, because those are questions that I received on the back end when we were talking about this from residents, the ones that I'm stating to you on that end.
And then in addition to this public hearing that we called tonight, we have had these maps available on our website and in the lobby here in City Hall for, I want to say about a week, maybe a little bit more. We have gotten some public comment by email. I believe the council members have seen that.
Yes, we did.
And so we have gotten some, some feedback. If city council wishes to receive more public feedback, we will of course work with you to do that.
Because the way I look at it, I'm, I'm personally myself, I'm not in a hurry to change this right off the bat. As long as we get more feedback from the residents and giving them that opportunity, even if it's a, a month or so from now, or we get close to June. But you know, these maps were just proposed not so long ago, maybe within the month. So it's just allowing people to, if they feel that they would want to come, at least we're giving them that opportunity to be able to see what the maps are and ask any questions about that.
So we have this tentatively set to return at the So we have this tentatively set to return at the, in the second meeting in May, which is set for May 27. And the reason for that is that Mr. Caputo isn't available in early May, and so that does give us a little bit of time before we would come back.
It's two months. Two months.
Yeah. Just to piggyback...
Councilmember Harris.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
What I'd like to emphasize is that there was a lot of data that went into structuring these and a lot of discussion about keeping neighborhoods intact. In District 4, Spring Branch and Silverado, which had been split out, now are intact. And we talked about the growth in District 2 and District 6, which actually, surprisingly, is, is greater than in District 4. I think that they did a great job in balancing those needs. One of the things that changed a little bit was all three now, all three of the districts have a little bit of the downtown area to take some interest and ownership in that. And then District 4 was given a little bit, a slice of retail, which basically there was no retail in District 4. So that balanced out the population. So there, there were some switches made that way for those reasons.
Councilmember Tobias, were you finished? I'm sorry. Okay, Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, I, I just don't see the population numbers adding up when those changes so big. I mean, you're taking all of Spring Branch now. I actually thought Spring Branch should have been in District 2 all along, not District 4. I, I can understand District 4 wanting a little bit of the downtown, but actually, I think District 2 should have more of the downtown than anything, because it's, it's the original district there. I, I'm not real comfortable with that, but honestly, it's, it's the, the, the size of the populations what really I'm worried about. I just can't see District 4 growing that exponentially and the numbers not changing. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I apologize, I know y'all had a great conversation, I know y'all had a two-hour conversation on this. I ju, I just, and I, I'm sorry I wasn't here, unfortunately, for health reasons, I was out, but I, I just think that District, the first map that came out was A, and I think it had a better understanding. I think the, the, the firm did a great job of providing the numbers and the data and the minute changes, and that's what I'm emphasizing, the minute changes, not drastic changes, that we're going to balance out the numbers. And I just think the next map is just too drastic of a map to, to follow into, and we're looking at projected growth. I mean, with the way the market is, the way the, we've got tariffs like crazy, I don't know what growth's going to look like in the future. We're predicting on that, and I, I think we should be doing these maps for now, and then in six years, do it for the growth. That's kind of how I feel that we're moving forward, we're looking at projected growth.
So, do you mind laying out the reasons why legally speaking, we had to make the changes?
Yes, the, the plan that you had, using the 2020 census data, which is what we're legally obligated to use, was vastly out of balance in terms of the one-person, one-vote standard. You can have no more than a 10% deviation from the largest district to the smallest district, and y'all ended up, I don't have it right here in front of me right now, but it was somewhere around 20%. So you were more than two times out of the constitutional standard. Plan A and Plan B both get you under the 10% standard, so they're both legally defensible from that perspective. I just want to make clear, there is no massive increase in District 4's population. Its, its population is slightly larger than the other two, but it's within that 10% deviation. So it's not a massive fluctuation from that perspective. Both plans maintain two majority Hispanic districts and also majority Hispanic voting age population districts, so that satisfies a different concern that we have under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. So both plans are workable, both plans are eminently defensible in court if we had to. It's just which is better for the community, and that's a decision y'all have to make.
And just one thing to call out, and Robert, I don't know, and Michael, I know you were there, but we were having issues, and I don't, I just want to highlight the fact that there are blocks within the maps where there are zero people in those blocks, because it's counting for future... So the, the vis, the visual of looking at the map is not necessarily reflective of the, the totality of the numbers.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the neighborhoods, how much more neighborhood they're encompassing, like more of Spring Branch, more of the downtown. That's what I'm looking at, those numbers right there, because those are more densely populated.
And so the, at least from my understanding, during the, when we discussed this, the reason why we landed, or one of the reasons why we landed on B was because there are more opportunities for growth, future growth, in Districts 2 and 6, based on developments that we've approved, which are scheduled to come online between now and when we would do the redistricting in 2030?
31, approximately.
2031. So while the numbers are, District 4 is slightly larger in terms of population, it is within the standard deviation, and the other districts, in theory, based on the growth of the approved developments, some of which are already being built, the, the populations will catch up. Is that accurate?
I think that was an expectation that, that council discussed and, and staff acknowledged, knowing where development is occurring and how it's developed, how it's occurring. You, you did have, by the way, about, almost a 22% deviation, top to bottom, previously. So we're significantly better than that in terms of the constitutional standard, either plan.
Yeah, I understand District 2 was huge. I mean, I, I've walked it, I understand that. I, you know, I understand that we've got future developments that are approved, but we all know that we've got a lot of future developments that never got done. I mean, there's some that I can think of just off my hand, you know, Bunton Creek Road, off of 150, developments that we approved that are not being built and probably never will be built in, in this next two, three years. I, I just kind of think that it's a drastic change, it's really big. I think we should have stayed with the minute change, and I, I definitely am going to advocate for the first map, because I think it's a smaller change when we're moving. Understand, keeping this, the neighborhoods together, but, you know, not even the county considered that. Kyle's a pie. I mean, we, we've got so many county representatives right now, precincts in Kyle, just alone in Kyle, it's, you know, we're, we're sliced up. No matter what you do, you're going to slice something up.
Anybody else? Okay.
We'll plan to bring an item back on May 27 to this, to discuss further.
Thank you, Council.
All right.
Thank, thank you for all the work you've done, appreciate it.
Okay, Michael, are you okay? Can we get Kent out of here and do 21, and then we'll do 26 and 28 right after?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, next up, Consider Impossible Action, Agenda Item 21. Consider Approval of a Resolution Finding Public Convenience and Necessity Authorizing the Use of Eminent Domain to Condemn, if Necessary, a .3902-acre parcel of land in fee simple and a public entity easement over a .925-acre parcel of land, both described in Exhibits A and A1 to the resolution from certain real property owned by Central Texas Sports Portfolio, LP, for the public use and purpose of construction of a public roadway improvements and public drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the Bunton Creek Road Extension Project. Ms. Schmides.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. We have a PCN on the agenda for you tonight. Just a reminder, in 2022, the voters pass a major road bond project for the city of Kyle historically, so 10.3 total miles of new location reconstruction and widening projects to improve our transportation network. This project will improve Bunton Creek Road from Lehman Road to Porter Cove. A little bit about the project, the alignment and design features were approved by the council in January of 2024, and then a task order to BGE Incorporated to complete the final design was approved in April of 2024. And there you can see the project limits. Parcel 11 is what we are talking about tonight. We need right-of-way for the roadway. We completed the survey and an appraisal was performed on the needed tract. This includes, we need 0.3092 acres of fee simple right-of-way, and then we need 0.0925 acres of a public utility easement here. So the right-of-way there is shown in green, and the PUE there is shown in purple. We need right-of-way for roadway and sidewalk infrastructure, and then for PUE, we need that for utilities. And there you can see that the road plan is overlaid on the property. So summary, tonight, we are asking you to pass a resolution finding a public convenience and necessity on this particular parcel. In doing so, if and when the, the city cannot come to an agreement with the property owner, it authorizes the city council to use eminent domain, if necessary, to acquire the property. And so we would ask that you approve the resolution. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Nope. Mayor Protem, I'd like to go and make a motion to provision in number 21.
I have to read a specific motion for this one.
No problem, sir.
Apologies, and this one will require a roll call vote. So I move that the city of Kyle authorize, authorize the use of, of the power of eminent domain to acquire .3902 acres of land in fee simple and a public utility easement over .925 acres from property owned by Central Texas Sports Portfolio, LP, as described in Agenda Item 21, for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements, and utility improvements for the Bunton Creek Road Extension Project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve made by myself and seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Roll call vote, please.
Mitchell is absent. Harris?
Yes.
Tobias?
Hi.
Zuniga?
Aye.
McKinney?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Next up is Agenda Item 26. Consider Approval of an Ordinance Amending Chapter, Chapter 2, Article 4 of the City's Code of Ordinance to Adopt Amendments to the City's Code of Ethics that were previously adopted in Ordinance Number 1245, approved on January 3, 2023, and mistakenly removed in Ordinance Number 1279 on September 5, 2023. Ms. Alcorn, read.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Members of Council, Amy Alcorn, City Attorney. I do want to start this presentation by noting that any changes to the Code of Ethics would not apply to any pending ethics complaints, they would only apply to new complaints moving forward. I want to make sure that's clear before we go through this.
Any new meaning as of today, today's date?
As of the date of, that this is passed, and it will require two readings, as there are only six of you present today.
Okay.
The background on this is that City Council adopted Ordinance Number 1245 in January of 2023. That ordinance included several changes to the Code of Ethics, and those changes were drafted and approved by the Ethics Compliance Officer that we had at the time and by the Ethics Commission before they went to City Council. And then in September of 2023, the City Council reviewed an item that came forward intended only to amend the terms of office commissioners, and if you look back at the agenda posting on that item, it's very clear that that was the intention. When that item was brought forward, staff included an older version of the Code of Ethics, and so by doing that, they inadvertently repealed all of the changes that were made in the ordinance passed in January of 2023. This was discovered recently. I wasn't here when this happened, but this was discovered in the past few months, and we've decided to bring it forward to correct the mistake. So this proposed ordinance would simply re-adopt the changes that were approved by Ordinance 1245 and include the change that was intended to be made in the later ordinance. The only other changes that I've included in here were some obvious typos. There was an "of" that I've changed "or" because grammatically that makes more sense, that sort of thing. The options are to approve the ordinance as presented, approve the ordinance with amendments, or deny the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance as presented. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Zuniga.
Hey, Amy, thank you for answering my email questions. Oh, I just want to be clear, if we approve these amended change, or if we approve this, we're not going to hinder being able to bring revisions to refine the Ethics Code later, because I think we've discussed that, there's, there's areas we could refine and improve it, and I don't think right now is the time for me to give you my suggestions, so I'd rather delay that, postpone that, because there are a lot of things I'd like to bring up in improving our ethics ordinance. And I don't want to take a, I don't want to block that by, by having two closely related agenda items.
Now, this, this would not prohibit future amendments to the Ethics Code. In fact, I have been discussing some that we recommend with the Ethics Compliance Officer. When we get that in a solid form, it would go to the Ethics Commission for review, just as our standard process was for the ordinance that was passed in January of 2023, prior to coming to the City Council for review. And of course, if anyone on City Council ever has suggestions of changes to ordinances, you're always welcome to reach out to me.
That, that was my question. I just wanted to make sure that I could still make, bring something forward without it being blocked.
Yeah. I, I just want to highlight that when we adopted this code of, the Ethics Code, it was a 6-1 vote, with the one dissenting vote being someone who's no longer on the dais, so we, you know, there were two, two of us, three of us, or four, including you, who we all voted to adopt it. And so just, again, repeating what Amy said, this is just fixing a mistake that was made when we uploaded the ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
So there is nothing that we haven't already approved as a governing body.
Basically, bringing what was originally passed forward again, because maybe the verbiage was not, not the verbiage was changed, but we used an older version than what we were using now. So moving forward, we're going back to the older version that we originally passed to replace the new?
With, with the change that was intended to be made. To be clear, what I did, I tracked down the red line that was attached in January of 2023. I used that, I made the change that was made in September, and I made no other changes, and I put it on this agenda.
As long as it's clear and it's...
Oh, except for the typos that I mentioned.
... and all that other stuff. So that way, we can get this all cleared out.
It's my understanding that, that we're just adding in some, some wording that was inadvertently deleted?
We're, we're deleting some that was inadvertently added back and adding in some that was inadvertently deleted.
All right, and this doesn't weaken or water down?
In, in my opinion, it does not.
Okay.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Amy, when we make, I guess, recommendations to revise the ethics ordinance, does that come back for a public hearing after it's been reviewed by the ethics attorney and the ethics committee?
I don't believe a specific public hearing is required. It would require a vote of City Council at an open meeting, so people would have the opportunity to speak at public comment as they can at any City Council meeting.
Okay. I'd just like to, you know, let the council know that the ethics ordinance is a very powerful document. There's a lot of important opportunities there to really build the integrity of the government that we have. So though, you really have to understand the wording, what the intent is, there's, there's a lot of power in that Ethics Commission, and as the gentleman had spoke earlier, there are some hiccups, but we are learning how it works, and it's, it's working by the book. And, and that's, that's why I want to bring some, some improvements as, as well.
I'm also going to note that probably the reason that this went so long without being discovered was that we did not have an Ethics Commission meeting for quite some time, and so it wasn't really looked at on a regular basis, the way it has been more recently.
So with that, I'm, I'm satisfied with this. I'd like to approve Agenda Item 26. Thank you, Amy.
Second.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 26 by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6...
Zero.
Zero. All right, so now we're going to go to item, Agenda Item 28, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff feedback regarding an update about Dacey Lane and Downing Way. Mr. Trimble.
Good evening again. Mike Trimble, Director of Transportation and Public Works. So several weeks back, council passed a resolution to direct us to look at options for making improvements at Dacey and Downing Way intersection, and so I wanted to walk through some of the background on that, but then also talk about what our recommendations are for that going forward. what our recommendations are for that going forward. So as was presented, Chief Barnett walked through this, that there have been safety concerns at Dacey and Downing. Twenty-one accidents have been called in over the past five years, including six accidents in 2024, as was reported at the last meeting, which is discussed. And really the big issues and several of the calls and accidents and crashes that have been reported really have to do with these conflicts, these turning movements at the Dacey and Downing intersection. So traffic that's heading southbound on Dacey and taking a left turn onto Downing Way and then also traffic that's leaving Downing Way and taking that left turn onto Dacey Lane. So those, those are creating several conflicts and creating the safety issues primarily. And that's been the source of a lot of the different safety, safety issues we've seen at this intersection. So a little bit of background, we have looked at this intersection previously. There was a preliminary engineering study that was done by STV back in 2023 and it was based on data that was collected in 2022. It did have several options it looked at, including looking at always stop control signage in each direction and also traffic signal installation, and then also looking at roundabouts. And the way the report laid it out, it basically evaluated some of the different options to improve at that intersection. It found at the time that, that the warrants did not indicate that signals were, were feasible at that time, but it anticipated that in 2025, they should come back and take a look at that and reevaluate the warrants. And then also the long-term build, which was 2040, was looking at the option for a roundabout, I'm sorry, 2043, was the building out of a roundabout. So that was a long-term recommendation that came out of that study. We did update the warrant analysis earlier in 2025. We did find in fact that that intersection did meet warrants to create an always stop and/or a signalized intersection. And so we took some immediate steps to, to make some safety improvements there at the intersection. We put some warning signs installed both northbound and southbound. If you've driven down that section of the roadway, you've, you've seen those speedway indicators. The good thing about those is those not only indicate to the driver what their speed is, but we also collect that data through that signal. And so we can get that data over to cop police and they can use that to inform their enforcement as well. And so they can see when those speeds are increasing, peak times, et cetera. And so also we've included warning signs about the speed. There's a advisory to reduce speed as they're entering that T intersection and also that they, that folks are encountering a T intersection as they are approaching that intersection as well. So those are already installed. And also we have temporary traffic signals that are going to be decommissioned. As you know, we did install a permanent or interim signals at Kyle and Kohler's intersection. That would happen last week. And so now that we have those installed, we can decommission those temporary signals that were placed out there. And what we'll do is we'll take those back and there's a couple of repairs that need to be made to those. And so we'll make sure those are in good working order. And our recommendation is to go ahead and place those temporary signals at that intersection and create a signalized intersection. And we'll be, do that beginning in early May. That's our anticipation for when those will be ready to go. And then at, past that, we, what we want to do is we want to update the data out of that study again. Kyle, the, the traffic data is changing quite a bit as our community continues, continues to grow. Sorry. So we want to update that data. So what we want to do is go back to the table, gather new data on the, on the intersection and those traffic volumes. And as I mentioned, we're also going to be looking at this corridor and then the movements throughout that corridor as part of the transportation master plan that we're kicking off this week as a matter of fact. And so we'll be doing that in the coming weeks and months. We do want to reevaluate those long-term options as well. It may be that signalized intersection makes sense for a number of years to come, but we want to evaluate that just based on what we're seeing, what the traffic data and the safety data is telling us. And so we'll be doing that study as soon as, as soon as we get those signalized intersections in place. And with that, we'll continue to evaluate as we go forward. We'll look at what the near-term improvements are doing. Again, gathering that information. We'll also be doing some striping around the intersection as we put those temporary signals in place. And so my team is working on that design of the striping now to go along with the signalized intersection. Also, we want to look at how that functions with Fountain Grove. Fountain Grove is another of T intersection that's not too far off from that intersection. So that's what we're going to be looking at going forward is how that functions both at that Dacey Downing intersection, Fountain Grove, and then also looking at that BB Dacey intersection. So again, as I mentioned, we want to start looking at the overall performance of segments of corridor and full corridors. And that's what we want to start looking at as we put those, those improvements in place. So that's what we'll be looking at over the coming weeks and months going forward. And that's our recommendation to move forward. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay.
Councilmember Tobias.
Thank you very much. Don't know if this was a long time coming, but it's just good to, to see where we're going to be doing something about it. So some of the feedback I've got from the area is a lot of people in the residents were approved of the getting the stoplights in that area. The only, the, one of the concerns we have, or maybe the, what is y'all's plan for as you're coming down south of Dacey and it's turning into Kensington Trails, there's no deceleration lane that people can pull off to the side and then if they need to make a left turn in. That's the only factor that I see there because everybody's going to be coming down and some people may be stopped at, to be able to turn left. So are, is, are they going to be synchronized as the same way as they are at Lehman and Bunton right now, where you have one going north, one going south, green lights, you know, or is it going to, and then you have, they both stop and then they can either turn left or right, leaving the, the neighborhood? Have we looked at that?
Yeah. So that's what we're going to be looking at. And I also have Chris Arnold and Leon Barber here as well. They may have some more information on this, but that's what we're going to be evaluating is how best to time those signals and set those up based on those turning movements and those conflicts and also the volumes. And so the good thing about the signals is we can also adjust the timing for peak hours. So as we get more volumes during those peak travel times, we can also adjust the timing of the signals to meet those peak travel times as well.
Exactly. Because I'm looking at as soon as seven thirty in the morning or seven, you leave out of the neighborhood, it goes all the way up the hill just to leave out. So if we get lights that go in there that can sync with the ones that are at Dacey and BB Road to where you have that, that flow to where you're not having so much of a backup as people are trying to pull into Science Hall. I think it's just, we could be able to look at those numbers to where you can be able to get that traffic out pretty quick. And then also certain times of the day, you don't really need to have too much of a long light to leave the neighborhood, but keep it flowing on that end. But I think it's just those peak hours is where we're starting to, where we're seeing a lot of those, those accidents. And I remember sending Brian a text message with photos of one of the accidents that happened, literally split the truck in half. And so it's just those concerns that we have there. As far as the roundabout goes, I know that'll be another discussion later on, but for right now, I think it's just trying to get something right now to where we can be able to get some people safely out of the neighborhood.
Absolutely. And we'll continue, like I said, to monitor the intersection, monitor how the signals are doing. If we need to do additional adjustments on the signals, we'll do that. So we'll see how they perform.
Okay. And I know this is a different topic and maybe this needs to come up later, but these traffic lights that we purchased that are the ones that we're going to install, we still have the same ones over there at Lehman and Bunton. They've been there for three years. As we're starting to get our road projects going at the end of the year, I know that was one of our main goals was to use those to delegate traffic to go in and out. So I think at a later time, we're going to need to discuss one more time about Lehman and Bunton, even though the roundabout's coming, that's still years from now. So that may be another conversation we need to have as far as maybe getting the lights like you have at Kohler's Crossing with the wires across with the poles. If we have to go that old school, then let's do it, you know, on that end. So we could pull those machines out because we're going to need them for the road, for the, for the construction.
Mayor Proton.
Councilmember.
Yeah, Mike, I'm kind of confused on something. You were talking about a DSO lane for a left turn? Or were you talking about a middle lane?
Well, like, let's say you're coming from Science Hall and you're going towards, let's say, the senior citizens group. So where it says the top two oh five with a, with an orange is turning in. It's, it's, it's all, it's all still a fast lane. There's no way to where people can veer to the left to turn in.
You're talking about a middle lane then?
Yeah.
Yeah, because DSO would be a right turn.
Yeah. Well, sorry, like a middle lane, a middle lane to turn in.
That's why it threw me off. I didn't know you were turning right or left.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you see where the people would be coming in from the orange?
The orange, the orange.
They would have to stop as traffic goes through and that's where a lot of the accidents happen.
Okay.
It's because they peel out and try to beat the oncoming traffic and that's where a lot of them get hit and also the one going blue.
Yeah. So a, a center turn lane probably be best there.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was trying to figure out. Okay, I appreciate you giving that. But, and also I want to say thank you for advocating for roundabouts. I'm going to go, you talked about that accident in that T bone intersection and that's a big reason why we are advocating for roundabouts is because of those major wrecks that are out there at high speeds. Definitely dangerous. So thank you for bringing that picture forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Well, we're talking about Dacey, not necessarily, not this intersection specifically, but it was mentioned that the senior centers on down Dacey. And where that driveway comes out is extremely dangerous. So I'm hoping that we, as we're looking at issues on Dacey, that we also look at that.
Yeah, that issue's come up and we've actually started to take a look at that and what potential options exist. Because I agree, I've, I've been through that area and, and because of the, the change in elevation, the limited sight lines coming out of that driveway and, and, and getting close to the driveway on Dacey as well. I agree that, and so we are looking at that, see what potential options exist.
Thanks, would appreciate that. And especially since we're dealing with mostly senior citizens. It isn't that we're bad drivers, but we do have, many of us have limited field vision. So we don't always see that traffic coming on either side until it's way too close. So we would like to have that taken into consideration.
Good point.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say thank you, Michael, for bringing this up. I'm just so surprised that it took this long to see this, this problem here. Is it possible that maybe lights were going to be installed and someone forgot the, someone dropped the ball and didn't install the lights there? I mean, it, it just surprises me that, that this is not, not seen, you know, in, in, in eight, 10 years. The number of accidents reported, maybe collisions, maybe, maybe someone's got killed there. I don't know. It just, we can't have, we can't have this kind of situation. It's really not acceptable. You know, when I look at it, it, it does make me mad just, just when I see it, you know, and it's not, you know, I wouldn't want this anywhere, you know, when I see it in Kyle. So it just, this, this is stuff we got to catch.
Just, just 21 accidents in five years, six of them last year in just this.
That should have raised, that should have raised up the priority, in, in my opinion.
I understand.
You know, once you have 21 fatalities there.
Well. Let's be very clear. Accident is not good either, but let's just make sure.
So we did, we did do, and we were waiting to, for this to basically meet warrants because we can't put in the signals until it meets the warrants and their MUTCD. And so it did finally meet warrants and we did that follow-up analysis earlier this year. So that, that's what allows us to move forward on this, so.
And, and that contributes to the rapid growth. That's everything that's coming in. And it's not just rapid growth in our city, it's rapid growth in the neighboring cities as well. They're transporting through our city as well. So we're now getting higher numbers, but we have intersections all over the city of Kyle that unfortunately we can't afford to put in signalized intersections at every single one of them. So we have to prioritize which ones are the worst, right? So, but really you could probably do, have an advocate for every intersection in Kyle with the traffic we have now. But unfortunately, you know, it's not that we oversite it, it's just we got to get to that point where now the numbers justify us putting it there. And that's why we couldn't have done it sooner.
I'll just add that, you know, one thing that, that I do want to help establish is
looking at a safety program, basically, and looking at all of those high incident, high crash intersections around the city and then seeing where are, we could do interim improvements, similar to what we've looked at Dacey and Downing, but there are other intersections as well and we know that. And so I do want to start being a little more proactive in doing that analysis. And so we're looking to get some resources to do that here in the coming weeks as well. So I want to start to, to get that going and I'll come back and report to you on that.
It's a good point as we're building these roads. It's a good point.
I would just say it's one of the reasons that we've created a position like Mike's and some of his team members is to start being more proactive on those issues and make sure we have good transportation planning and that we bring prioritized solutions back to the council for recommendations of how you'd want to proceed. But you know, it's, this is one that certainly has been affected by the growth and that's changed rapidly over the last few years, as everybody knows, but we want to be more in front of those. So that's our intent to continue to do that.
And you got walkers that are right there, those kids that walk all the way down and they got across the street.
Yes.
So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Next up is agenda item 22, consider approval of a resolution amending selection criteria for moderators for the Dialogue for Peace and Progress Event Series. Ms. Sonier.
Hello, council. I am bringing forward a amendment to a resolution for the Dialogues for Peace and Progress Event Series. So just for a little background, in August 15th, 2023, council approved a resolution that created criteria for selection moderators as well as panelists for the dialogue series. And then on January 21st, 2025, council gave direction to bring back a resolution updating the policy to remove criteria that moderators be elected city officials or appointed board members. Sorry. And that moderators, and removing the criteria that moderators be selected by council prior to each dialogue event. Just a reminder of what our current criteria is, where it stands today. Moderators must be elected officials or appointed city board or commission committee members, must not be running for office within the city of Kyle or Hayes County or any office that represents city of Kyle or Hayes County. And that moderators be selected by council prior to each dialogue and peace progress event. The policy also includes that moderators be, choose the panelists from the pool of applicants, outline discussion topics and moderate the panel, of course. Some of the proposed changes that we're bringing for you today involves removing the criteria that moderators be elected city officials or appointed city board or commission members, removing the criteria that moderators be selected by council prior to each event. And we're also recommending removing the criteria that moderators are responsible for choosing panelists from the pool of applicants. We're recommending this be moved back under staff to minimize any potential conflicts of interest if we have moderators that are not elected or board or committee members. Some other proposed changes that we're thinking about for this event is tying it in to things like market days. We have a Juneteenth Market Days. We also have a Hispanic Heritage Month Market Days. And we know our library also has at least a display, if not some programming for Black History Month every single year. So we were thinking of enhancing the program, getting a wider audience by tying it into those events. Today, we're bringing forward the options of option one, approve the resolution, removing council for moderating the events or selecting of moderator, and work to tie the dialogue events into these kinds of synchronous events like market days and library programming. Or option two, just approve the resolution, removing council for moderating or selecting moderators, but make no further changes to the event. Or option three, which could be any other changes y'all see fit and, or to not approve the resolution as we have it drafted.
No.
Councilmember. Anybody else want to go first?
I guess I'll go. This was, again, back history originally brought forward by a former council member who's no longer here. Through the years, it was very wary, appreciated by the public to participate. Unfortunately, there had been some times recently that it got a little personal and political. And we, as a council, felt, I mean, I, I hold myself responsible, could have done better. But I think moving forward, my opinion, a council should be removed from this. I would like to turn it back to the city to do it, just like any other programming that the city does. We have a lot on our plate as it is. I, I know that a lot of people still appreciate this dialogue, but I would pretty much recommend going with option one so that way the city can be able to take over it fully and have no holdback or no restrictions placed upon them. And I think it's moving forward, it'll turn out a lot, a lot better. And I yield.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Brian, I was really surprised to see this on the agenda. Reason why is I thought last time we had this discussion, we had talked about doing away with peace and progress. And the reason why was because it becoming very political and seeing that the original council member that put this together is no longer here and it served its purpose. It actually was a great tool for us to really get people's conversations started. Unfortunately, when you have something good, sometimes it turns bad. And I really think that even moving forward, this, we're still going to see a lot of the animosity we saw. It actually was a great tool for us to really get people's conversation started. Unfortunately, when you have something good, sometimes it turns bad. And I really think that even moving forward, this, we're still going to see a lot of the animosity we saw in this last one and worried about people taking ownership of it, or wanting to run it, or even the council later on, you know, going back and putting council members on there again. It, I just, I just really think that we're, we're looking at something in the future that we're gonna regret not finally seeing that it's served its purpose, served its life, and it's, it's probably something we should be moving away from and finding something new, something, we've got a great staff, a great, great communications team. I think we could probably improve on something new, come up with a new idea as well.
Is that a question for me, or?
Yeah, just, why is it back on the agenda? Because I thought last time we gave direction to do something different.
Yeah, I, I think the, the reason is, is because the council has an existing resolution that defines what that process will be. And so we're bringing something back to, to get specific direction on what it is that you'd like to do. And that, that's the purpose of this, is to get clear direction on what you want. If, if the intent is not to, to have these, these events at all and to do something completely different, that would be information we need to know as well. But right now, there's an existing resolution with council direction. So we need to either amend that or repeal it.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to do, way with peace and progress and challenge our staff to come up with something new.
Is there a second? With no second, the motion dies. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Option Two, the, to approve resolution, removing council for moderating events, selecting moderators, but make no changes to the event.
Just for clarification, you don't want us to tie in with any other events like market days or Kyle Public Library programming or anything like that and just keep it as is currently?
I would like you to make that decision. So if that makes what I just said Option One, then I will reverse and go with Option One. I just, I would like to see these events try to exist on their own without us meddling in them. And if that happens and it doesn't work, then we go back to the drawing board. But for now, you know, I don't, I don't want to pull the plug on them. And I don't want to just throw them into other events. I want to give them a chance. These are important events that can stand alone and can take shape in whatever format that, that staff decides. So.
Staff, we were kind of thinking of trying to enhance the event just because we've had lag in attendance over the past couple of years for certain ones. So we thought about maybe expanding the audience because a large part of it is drawing people into the council chambers. So we thought maybe combining with an event that already has a large pedestrian and walking crowd in there that we could draw them in, in that way, and get them a little bit more notice of it.
More of thinking outside the box.
So Option One will allow for both. If you decide they can, okay, all right. Well, I'd like to rescind the motion that I made. It didn't have a second anyway. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Option One.
Just letting you know, I think y'all are making a big mistake. I think this is a really bad road we're down. We're going to see someone dominate this thing and try to take ownership of it. I really think that it's served its purpose. I think that we should be moving into something new and really, we, we've got a great communication staff. We've got a great staff that can come up with something. And like we talked about, the attendance is low. I mean, it's really, really low. Why do we want to continue to put money and time and staff time into something that doesn't really generate a big audience?
Thank you. Motion to approve Option One made by me, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 5-1.
Thank you, council.
Next up is Agenda Item 23, Consider Approval of a Resolution Determining That A .432-Acre Portion of Greg Clark Park Must Be Used or Taken For Purposes Of Constructing The Roadbound Project For The Expansion Of Center Street. This item does, does call for a public hearing. Ms. Schmice.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council members. Amber Schmice, Assistant City Manager for the Record. So in 2022, we had the roadbound project. It included the expansion of Center Street right away adjacent to Greg Clark Park. In order to construct this portion of the roadway, we need a 0.432-acre segment of land along the edge of the park boundary, and it must be taken for the expanded right away. This item is necessary to meet state law requirements for taking or use of parkland for other programs. So according to the Parks and Wildlife Code, Section 26.001, the city may not approve a project that requires the taking or use of current parkland unless the city council determines that, one, there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the use or taking of such land, and the, to the program or project includes all reasonable planning to minimize harm to the land as a park, recreation area, scientific area, wildlife refuge, or historic site resulting from the use or taking. And we have determined the resolution will make the necessary finance for the taking or use of such land for the expansion of the Center Street roadway as part of the roadbound project. And here's the survey. And this item includes a public hearing.
With that, I would like to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments?
Mayor Protim would like to make a motion to consider approving Agenda Item Number 23.
Second.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 23 made by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next item is Agenda Item 24, Consider Approval of an Ordinance Amending Section 53-1198 Regarding The Appointment's Terms Vacancies For The Board Of Adjustment. Ms. McCollum.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and Councilwoman Melissa McCollum, Chief Development Officer. I, I just want to let you know that Items 24 and 25 are kind of connected on the agenda. Both of these items are really being brought back to you based on a discussion that we had in February 4th, really kind of talking about the makeup and outline of what the Board of Adjustment is, really syncing it up with state law, with our local government code, and kind of our current codes of ordinances. So this item number 24 is really looking at the ordinance to align it with our other boards and commissions and how we do that. And then the following item, number 25, is really a resolution to confirm our current appointees.
And just for clarity, item 25 will come back next meeting because this will require a second reading.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So again, this item, 24, is looking at, at the ordinance and, and then the second item is, is the resolution appointing those members. So with that, the local government code does outline some considerations for the Board of Adjustment and how those members should be appointed. And we have our own correlative ordinances and, and rules that mirror that now. And with the small changes in this, we'll really bring those born in line and really link back to Section 245 and how our committees are appointed for that. So with that, you have some options for this ordinance. We look at Option One to approve it as presented. On, on Option Two, would provide or recommend any modifications to that. Or Option Three would be to deny the ordinance. Staff is recommending Option One.
All right. Councilmember Tobias.
Yes, I think it's time that we, we, especially at this one here, we look at changing it to where we can in sync with all our boards and commissions with the same thing, taking applications. Because it looks like the, the last person that was appointed, or the first person, has been here since 2016. So it's almost nine years has been the person been on there. Not saying that they haven't done a good job, but I think it's time for us to be more modern in, in our boards and commissions. That's what we went through so many months and years of trying to get the pro, board processing, application process involved, applications and so forth. So I recommend going with not so much us appointing anymore, but, but going by the boards and commissions, especially for these. So I would recommend Option Number One, what you're stating.
Was that a motion, or was that?
Yeah, I'd like to go and take, make a motion, if anybody else did anything, to make a motion to direct staff to go with Option One, using the Board of Adjustment membership as the boards and commissions' ordinances in place to take applications.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion to approve Option One made by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6-0. So we do want to do 25, or?
25 will need to come back after the ordinance has been changed.
Okay.
We'll postpone that until the next meeting.
Okay.
It'll run with the second.
Yes, because there are some people here that are up for appointment and their time actually ends September 30th anyway, so we're good on time.
All right. Well, we will be postponing item 25 then. Thank you, Melissa. Next up, we will jump to Item 27, Receive Report, Hold a Discussion, and Provide Staff Feedback Regarding Opportunities and Strategies For The City of Kyle's Public Art and Cultural Program. Mr. Lopez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protim and City Councilmembers. It is, it is a, a privilege for Kyle Parks and Recreation to serve as the liaison department for the Arts and Cultural Board. Playing a lead role in this endeavor is our Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Chris Escoto, who is going to come up and, and expound on some ideas for a vision and future of public art in the city of Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening. Chris Escoto, Parks Deputy Director. As Mr. Lopez alluded to, today we are here to talk about the public art program. Recently, the public art program was inherited by, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department. And within that, we've been providing various vision strategies to the public art board where we're going to be talking about today. So, we had a public speaker earlier today that happens to be the board member. And they spoke about how public art serves as a catalyst for various components. I'm sure if you're looking on the screen, you're gonna probably think about cities just based on the various public art sculptures. You have Chicago, you have Denver, Minnesota, Dallas. So what does all this do? It drives tourism, economic growth, it does promote cultural engagement, meaningful dialogue. We're talking about creating identity and honoring the, the history of a city. So that's what all of this public art, I guess illusion sort of, sort of speaks to. So there are various types of public art. It's not always murals, sculptures. There's more than that. There is immersive art, digital art, environmental art. There's a handful of items that I wanted to leave with you today to highlight how broad public art could be. So what's the current status of, of the program itself? So the Pro's Master Plan that you're all familiar with does happen to provide feedback when it comes to promoting arts. So this was feedback that was received from the community. So ultimately, the community actually ranked it within the top eight items for them to visualize public art within our public spaces. So that's something that not only is going to be an action item on behalf of our Pro's Master Plan, but it's something that our community has spoken about. Not to mention the Arts and Cultural Board has also expressed interest in expanding that program overall. So what are the current projects that we have? We have the Public Art RFP that was issued this past year. That item will be coming forward to you all at the next monthly meeting on the Agenda Item, May 6, as well as the roundabouts that you all have been hearing over the last several months, that are going to feature public art components. So, in front of you today, we're going to be talking about the public art master plan. So what is a master plan? Typically, a master plan outlines various components when it talks to mission, vision, purpose, direction, strategy, procedures. One thing to mention is that the city of Kyle currently does not have one. Communities that typically feature a public art board, committee, you name it, that's something that typically they, they have. So that's something that staff has recognized. With public art being so complex and subjective, we've realized that we need a master plan for us to identify strategies. And overall, without one, you're going to have inconsistent procedures, strategic gaps, and unclear priorities. So derived from the master plan itself comes various strategic goals. Those strategic goals are going to be derived from the community and council. Here's some examples that are given to you in front, which could be cultural identity, promoting sustainability, just to give you some examples. So the metrics for success, what are we looking at for success for Kyle? So the master plan provides you with some of that information, defining measurable outcomes, again, ultimately driven by the, by the vision of the community and council. So the proposed vision that we presented to the Public Arts Committee on February 19th outlined some short-term goals and long-term goals that we can further this public art program. So we are establishing what we call quick wins. One of those quick wins could be murals, traffic box murals. So you've seen them probably in Austin and various cities throughout the states. It's one of those components that we're looking to do is how do you engage with the community? Well, there's an idea there that we can engage with the local high schools. Can we create some type of contest where we're going to have various student artists promote art within our traffic box wrap? So that's something that we've had conversations with our engineering team and ultimately have received their buy-in. So that's one thing that, that they said could be a good idea, and that's something that we're still trying to work through. Another component is those long-term goals. So how do we develop a public art master plan? Expanding partnerships, funding, identifying your grants, how can you further those programs? Those are all those various components that are more long-term vision. And of course, identifying those, those large projects, which we have a couple with some of the roundabout projects. So further along, as staff is identifying all these various components, staff, again, recognize the need for a public art master plan. So we reached out to a consultant that is considered one of the top tiers, nationally recognized consultant, has conducted various plans in Austin, Louisville, Richardson, El Paso, McKinney, just to mention some from the states, or from Texas, I'm sorry. But there are various other cities that they've led master plans for, for big premier public art cities. So one of the things that we do want to bring in front of you today is that this proposal is currently not budgeted this fiscal year. However, it is something that we have identified savings through our, our budget process, as well as we want to highlight that this is not going to impact the Park CIP program. So why, why is this necessary? We are wanting to establish that framework for future art projects. We want to make sure that we're identifying those community needs to identify a plan ultimately, and being, being able to, to follow through with a lot of the vision from the community. So not only that, it is timely right now with the budget process. So that's something that we're currently looking to identify. What are these future projects to further, further the public spaces here in Kyle? So ultimately, staff is seeking feedback regarding the future of the public art program here in Kyle. If this is something that council feels like we need to incorporate, we will be bringing back a council Agenda Item next, next meeting for us to engage with this public art consultant. So with that, stand for questions.
You went first. Yeah, thank you. Super excited about the, the public art coming up. You talked about funding, y'all talked about grants. One of the avenues I want you to explore as well is having display centers. So a lot of artists will, I've been to cities where they display an artist's art and they have a QR code by it. So now we get this really nice piece of art in our city and we're not paying for it. It's displayed so somebody can buy it later, right? So now it's got a rotation as well. So I want y'all to keep that in mind as well. That's, I thought that was a great idea. I saw it in a city in, in Colorado and they did that. They had a QR code under the art piece and people could come by and buy the art. I remember seeing one piece that the business owner loved it so much, he ended up buying the piece and keeping it there in front of his shop because it was, it was something really amazing. But, you know, make sure we're pursuing all avenues, you know, to make sure that we're being efficient with our dollars and, and being able to rotate those pieces as well. I mean, when you put down a piece of art, when you purchase it for a lot of money, you're, you're kind of, it's kind of stuck there, right? But to have a rotation would be great as well. There's some pieces you want there forever, and there's some pieces you'd love to see changed. So just keep in mind all the avenues and every, every option and every opportunity we have to, to bring in art and different artists to our community would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
And yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Tobias.
Two things. How well do you think they'll be able to work with our Culture Arts Commission? You know, we want to be able to have them involved with, with a lot of this input. And just like we just talked about, market days and everything else, how do you think the, this type of art would be interacting with some of our events that we have in the city?
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess the first point that you made when it came to the Arts and Cultural Board. So they're going to be receiving through RFPs and all these various forms of advertisement, they're going to be various forms of advertisement, they're going to be reviewing the, the art. So that RFP that we're going to be bringing this next meeting is something that has been vetted by that committee, and they're going to be providing you with those options, recommendations, that ultimately you have the final decision on route to go, what route to go on, on whether to pick both, one, whatever it is. Council will have that decision. When it comes on how we can interact, these public sculptures within our, or even murals, you name it, what are, that may incorporate within our programs, events, to Councilmember Rizzo's comment on temporary art, there's ways that we can integrate various programs. So there's a number of ideas that we can have, and that could very well be something that we have a conversation with the Arts and Cultural Board for us to start identifying those strategies in ways that we can interact with the community.
Thank you for bringing this. So this is a consultant that will help design and place art?
No, it's, it's going to be more geared towards identifying that vision. So identifying those goals, strategic goals, those metrics of success, it's going to establish, outline foundational input when it comes to procuring public art projects. So it's, essentially it's going to create SOPs, standard operating procedures, policies in place for order for us to be able to bring these items to you all. So there's going to be a separate process for us to bring actual art. But ultimately, this is the foundational plan for order, in order for us to get there.
Okay, yeah, I was looking at more at the, the evaluation of the artwork, like by the, what is the, what's the product the artist is delivering? That, that's what I thought this was.
Yeah, I mean, there, there could be, I mean, going back to the, to the example that I gave on different types of art, right? They're going to define, you have murals, you have sculptures, you have lighting installations, immersive, digital, all those various components they're going to talk about. But they're not necessarily going to tell you, hey, it's going to be this type of product. That's going to be geared from the artist that's going to be able to put their creative mind in delivering whatever scope that exists from, from that project.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really, like, I would say, with murals, I'm sort of very cautious of what the murals are, because I know that some murals don't make sense in some neighborhoods. And I don't want bad quality murals. Murals that, like, lead to stereotypes. I don't, that's not the stuff I want to see in Kyle. So that's why even, I know that we had that late Kyle mural proposed a while back, and I, I pushed back on that for those reasons. So this would be like, if in the scope of this consultant, I would like to see that, like revisited, kind of, from those, from, from those artistic, you know, positions.
Sure. And there'll be parameters established, and those parameters, again, will ultimately go in front of council, for you all to have final decision on whatever type of public art project it may be.
Right. It's because it's, it has, this has to increase the, the quality of life and, you know, it, it has to enhance the community. Just to put something there that's not going to add value to the community does not, in my opinion, make sense. That's how, that's, that's my position on murals. Not, not on sculptures, just on the mural part.
So you hate murals?
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
Councilmember Harris.
I happen to love. You know that there are some murals in Los Angeles that don't make sense in those communities.
We're not Los Angeles. I, I like murals, but the Arts and Cultural Commission will be reviewing these and bringing them back to us. It's, it's not this consultant who's going to be making those decisions. We have a, we have a board that is designed to help with these decisions.
That's what it's all, art all about, Zuniga, Dr. Zuniga?
It is subjective.
It's about expression.
Yep.
It's all about expression.
I just want to say that if you travel Soco, the industrial area, you're going to see a lot of murals. This used to be a very highly industrial area, and now to see the new owners coming in and doing these really nice murals. There's one right now of Jimi Hendrix and Willie Nelson together. Just takes my breath away. I mean, to see the art and what they've done, they've, the reflecting of the artists that are in the area. They're even taking, there's even one mural that's on Sesame Street, really beautiful, on one of the buildings. But they're doing great things with these murals. I mean, but it enhances the neighborhood. I mean, I remember just seeing a bunch of construction trucks back in the day. Now to see the quality of retail and walkability and people actually engaging in those areas now is really important. And it's all because of the artwork in there. You're seeing different businesses come in as well. Back in the day, you'd see a supply house come in. Now you see these really nice businesses come in, you see better retail, you see more job opportunities as well. So there's a lot of things that art does for your community. So, and I'm getting to see it. I mean, I, I, I'm really happy that I could see what Soco evolved from the beginning to what it is now. I remember starting over Barton Springs and to Hans, and go down Congress, and to see all the art and all the MXD coming up and down there, and to see the change of quality of life in that area is really amazing. But I definitely would encourage people to go by and look at the art in those areas.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
No, it does not. Next item is Agenda Item 29, with Councilmember Zuniga is going to pull Item 29. And that is because one of the things he and I discussed, he made this recommendation at the end of our water meeting on March 29th, and he had asked for a summary report in staff. Brian and staff agreed to put that together. So it's something that's already being worked on. So, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Some is.
Second.
Or adjourned?